All right, let's call this meeting to order. It's the regular meeting, May fourteenth, Syo Township Board of Trustees will call a meeting to order and we'll have a roll call and then we'll please join in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please call roll.
Hathaway.
President.
Palmer.
Present.
Flintoff, present, Brzezo. Harry, present, Noel.
Present.
Riser.
Present.
And also president is our attorney and manager.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The item is adoption of the agenda, and I know there are a couple of items to be added. Bert Flintoff?
Sure, I'd like to add one item onto new business for discussion only. And it would be a discussion of the water and sewer rates study.
So that would be K four. And then I'd like to add another item for new business, this would be K five, this is to approve a budget amendment to the Downtown Development Authority's budget. The Downtown Development Authority Board approved yesterday at their meeting. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
I would like to pull H eight, the KBK landscaping, please.
So that would move after K five. Anything else?
Will, did you have a contract for K five or just a budget amendment? We discussed the possibility.
Oh, I'll hand it out when we get to that item.
Okay.
I do have copies of that.
Okay, for possible action by the board or for reference?
Well, the board could take action on it if it chooses.
Okay.
So this is something that's not in the packet?
Yes, it's, I'm sorry, I meant to have things together to hand out and I'm sort of rushing around today, but I have copies of the agreement, the Washtenaw County Road Commission Agreement that is the subject of a budget amendment.
I understand what it is. I understand it's K five.
Okay.
But I'm, why don't you pass them out now?
Sure, sure, I can do that. You can, I can help with that.
Okay, so why don't we have K five be the budget amendment to PDA and contract?
Okay. Okay, any other changes to the agenda? Any other changes, someone prepared to move the agenda as amended? I would move the agenda, moved by Riser.
I'll support.
Support by Noel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the agenda is approved, that brings us to special order. The first item is the resolution honoring Daniel Burke on his retirement. And Chief, would you like to introduce this item?
Sure, thank you, board. As you know, Captain Burke has retired officially as civilian again, Captain Burke. One of our first fire firefighters here in Syo Township and a founding member of the department back in nineteen eighty-six when it first began. I have before you a resolution honoring him, I'd love to have the board make the motion, remember, read the resolution. After that, I do have a few comments to make and presentation.
Someone looking forward to reading the resolution? If not, I can, I can go ahead. All right, I would like to make a motion to approve the following resolution. Whereas Daniel Burke was a founding member of the Syo Township Fire Department when it was created in nineteen eighty-six. And whereas Daniel Burke was one of the first full-time firefighters employed by Syo Township hired on April twelfth nineteen ninety-nine. And whereas Daniel Burke has faithfully served the community throughout his career. And whereas Daniel Burke has served in virtually all positions from firefighter to captain. And whereas Daniel Burke was instrumental in the organization of the labor movement associated with the full-time professional firefighters in the community. And whereas Daniel Burke loved contract negotiations so much that he unknowingly, at the time of planning the vacation, vacationed on an island in the Caribbean with the township labor attorney. And whereas Daniel Burke's career as a firefighter has made an impact on the lives of thousands of residents and visitors to the community. Now, therefore be it resolved that Syo Township, its residents, visitors and businesses, thank Captain Burke for his years of dedicated service. And be it further resolved that we wish for a long and enjoyable retirement for Captain Burke.
Supporting.
So I believe we can take a roll call vote.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes, Brzezo?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zeros.
Well, something the fire service has a lot of is tradition. Unfortunately, here inside, we don't have a lot of tradition, as we're a young department. Captain Burke is one of the first few members to retire after a full career. So we really had to decide what we wanted to do for our retiring members, and I think the most appropriate thing to do is award them the helmet they wore on their last day of service. I think anyone looking up here at this table can recognize that's a firefighter's helmet. And they have a kind of an idea of what it does, right, it's an impact protection, so it's something that follows up. They have your protection for their head, but it's a little bit more than that. Not only has it got the hard outer shell, it's got a real strong support inside the helmet to reduce impact. It's got eye protection, the captain wears this on car accidents, and if he needs to operate a tool or something else, he can just flip down his eye protection. And the back of the helmet also out of tradition was designed to keep rain and water out of the back of a firefighter's collar. There's a lot more that goes with it, too, the tradition of this helmet goes back to before they even had plastics, the shape has nothing to do with protection today. It's shaped this way because the first fire helmets were made of leather and they were formed, and that's how they made them supported, they have they have engraving on them, and all, today, these are all just pieces of plastic molded, but they're traditional, and that's why these remain like this. On the captain's shield, you notice two bugles. An officer had bugles because in the days before radios, that's how they communicated orders to firefighters. Another piece of tradition that sits with this helmet. From a firefighter's perspective, it's very different as well, when the captain opened this helmet, it was bright and shiny, brand new. You know, today, it's a little bit different, the captain got a red helmet that has signification to of an officer. When he's working with firefighters in a dark and smoke environment, they can see his helmet and know that's the captain they came with. When he's working with our neighbors, they recognize that helmet as the officer of that crew. After years of use, this helmet isn't shiny and new anymore, it's got a lot of dings and scratches, and you can see it doesn't really shine, it's covered with smoke. Every one of these imperfections that are in this helmet now are a result of something the captain did while he was on duty. As he transitions into retirement, this helmet's gonna have new meaning, too. He's gonna take it home and be able to put it on a shelf, it's no longer something he throws on the truck every day. It's no longer something that he wears while he works. Now it becomes a memory of his years of service for the fire department, he's worked here for decades. And it's gonna transition into remembering those decades of years of service, he's, there's a lot of calls the captain's been on where he hasn't been able to make a difference. The fire was too involved, the accident was too bad, but there were a lot more calls where he made a difference. Were able to make a good stop on a fire, we rescued someone from a vehicle, he saved lives on medical calls. And that's really kind of what this helmet's gonna represent to a retiree, most importantly, his co-members. And we've worked with a lot of people throughout our careers, some we got along with, some we didn't, all those feelings stayed in the past, and you remember all the good people you worked with. And last but not least, is to present this helmet to Captain Burke. Not only did you get to do the best job in a royalty made a career, but congratulations.
Chief said something earlier, you said my speech was ready, but that's not my style, that's probably karma, I get in trouble a lot because I don't think before I speak. But I do want to say thank you, thank you to everybody, citizens and my coworkers and my what, thanks, Chief. Thank you.
Well, that brings us to our next item on the agenda, which is also under special orders, this is the fire department promotion, so may I turn again to you, Chief.
Thank you, board, in front of you, you have an agenda item, authorizing promotions, it has to be effective to date of Captain Burke's retirement. We conducted extensive testing, both written testing and oral interview, our third-party independent consultants, we ranked our candidates. And for Lieutenant, Captain, soon-to-be Captain Bourne is our first place candidate. And soon-to-be Lieutenant Cobb is our first place candidate for lieutenant.
Is there someone who would like to make the motion? So the motion is, I'll read it out loud, to authorize promotion of Lieutenant Brett Bourne to Captain and firefighter Glenn Cobb to Lieutenant, effective on May third twenty twenty-four concurrent with the retirement of Captain Burke. And we need a roll call or can we just vote by? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Supposed, motion is passed.
All right. Congratulations.
And often as you start your new role as a department, you're making a transition. Captain Burke can tell you, his job is eighty percent thinking, twenty percent doing. Residents and visitors of the community are relying on you now to evaluate scenes, make decisions and lead people. You don't want to read the follow-up line, you don't want to get to operate the tool, now's your chance to stand there, watch people and tell them how to do their job. You know, another part of this job is managing people, sometimes it's gonna be difficult. New firefighters are gonna test you and try you. But I know you'll rise to the occasion, you know, if you follow your policies, if you follow the rules and treat people fairly, you'll have success. Unfortunately, we've got to learn a lot of administrative tasks, now you've got to do the schedule, you've got to manage vehicle repairs, you've got to check your reports in the morning and follow up to make sure firefighters have their job done, but at the end of the day, that's all good. And don't forget, you have a group working with you to get these things accomplished, Assistant Chief and myself, the captains. The five of us together are a team that are directing the fire department the right way, you're now part of the team, congratulations.
Thank you.
To pin his badge. Brett significant other, Vic. They go one. Congratulations, Captain. You heard me talk a little bit about some of the administrative stuff the captain has to do. You're going from a hundred percent doer, it's now an eighty percent doer or twenty percent thinker. Unfortunately, you've got the hardest part of the, the hardest job in the fire department, you've got to bounce back and work more than anybody else. And you've got a lot of learning to do on the way. You're going from friend to everybody, to leader. You have the abilities to do it, and we have confidence in you. You do have a lot of learning as you go along, continue to get your degree, continue to educate yourself, and you have a whole team working with you to help train. Assistant Chief, myself, the captains, we're all there with you, you've got fellow lieutenants to lean on, and a captain that has got some seniority and knows what he's doing to help them. First up, in leadership, you've already taken, you've all prepared yourself for future growth, continue to do that, continue to learn throughout your career. And congratulations on working your first step in your new position in the department, appreciate it, and if we could have one's father, Mr. Ken Cobb in office. And board, if it's acceptable, I think a lot of folks would like to excuse themselves for the hallway for pictures, so will you continue intermed?
Thank you very much, thanks everyone for coming. We're gonna move on then with communications to the Board of Trustees, are there any comment about the communications? They're all in the packet. That brings us to public comment, this is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. And Steve Brzezo, will you serve as our casekeeper?
And I just want to know, Mary let me know, she said some people on Zoom are having trouble hearing us, I don't know if that's still going on, but I I can't troubleshoot it myself, some settings were changed, I texted Chris, so we'll do the best we can.
Is it a matter of speaking up towards the microphone or is it?
No, it sounds like there's a technical issue.
If there's someone present in the hall who would like to speak during public comment, please come forward.
Here or here, this is new.
Probably better for the microphone.
Yeah.
Throwing me off over here.
Yeah.
Good evening, trustees, I just want to announce that I am a candidate for the Board of Trustees. And allowing the residents also to know. And very quick, because I've got twenty years of public service and have been in elected office several, all of those twenty years. In addition, I am passionate about the place that I live, and that is the catalyst for putting myself out there because I'm passionate about where I live, Syo is where I live, and that's where I want to invest time and energy. And I invite residents, I invite anyone interested to go to a website where you will see my bio. It gives all sorts of juicy information about my background. Also, a platform, the items that I have placed as priority and that I want to pursue if I were to be elected a trustee, and also a pledge that I make to myself and to the township, that I come prepared, that I will support, respect and hope to and demonstrate that I will listen to everyone and discern and understand their points of view and really work as a team to look for solutions that work as much as possible for everyone and the public benefit. Thank you.
Did you say your name at the beginning?
Oh, Judy Monk, I probably did not, you threw me off with the lecture in here. Thank you, everyone, and thanks to everyone who's been sharing and my listening tour, so I really appreciate everyone who's done that, too.
Thank you.
Who's next for public comment?
You had a listening tour?
I'm having a listening tour, I just don't have a bus.
Good evening, Kathleen Brandt, I'm still a Syo resident, still a registered voter and newly threw my hat into the ring to run for trustee, it seemed inevitable after spending almost three years watching what's going on in the township. There's some folks that asked me to do that, and I'm honored that they asked me, and it's a it's a great responsibility. Also, an open invitation to any resident that would like to question my values, my focus, what I might think needs to be done, and I would love to listen to any resident for what they think is important. Also, just got an update that the sound is okay, apparently the clapping was overwhelming.
Oh, thank you.
So that seems to be an okay issue.
Thank you.
And a topic I had not planned on speaking about, but it seems important. The DDA budget amendment to spend five hundred thousand dollars on a very short portion of Jackson Road. I am very much opposed to that, it sets a very bad precedent. Jackson Road is a primary road, the Road Commission is responsible for that, I don't think it's reasonable or prudent to have DDA funds involved in that, it seems that there should be other sources of funds to maintain that because it's such a small portion, it's not sustainable for this township to be contributing to repairing Jackson Road, and the deal was that they're responsible. And if it comes down to they can't repair it, maybe the thing is just too big, maybe we put in too many lanes. Maybe we have a runway out there that is not safe for pedestrians, but I would hope that you would consider not supporting the DDA recommendation and that you denied it, thanks so much.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Hey, everybody, that was fantastic to see us being able to honor one of our firefighters. Thank you guys for doing that, and thank you to Chiefhood for all his words and Captain Burke for his service. Also, thank you to Skip Davis who's here tonight, who has served the township for a very long time and was recently publicly awarded, there was a Sun Times article. The board didn't see in total, also thank you to Deputy Clerk Mary Gillis on her her current service and her soon-to-be transition out of the township, she's a news editor, but she's done a lot for township during all of her service, I think this is a great way to honor people and something we should do really moving forward for, you know, anyone has provided a lot of years of service to the township. Do look forward to the new deputy clerk being approved here shortly and hope everybody has a great meeting, thanks.
Thank you, Ryan.
I'm gonna speak loudly, sorry, it's yelling, Pat Stein, longtime resident of Syo Township. I looked through the agenda tonight and I didn't see any report from Manager Parker regarding the brands of the barn and some to-do or action items that were gonna be presented tonight, I'm hoping I hear that information during your oral report. Two of the things, and I don't know where I would find this from you, Jessica, clerk of the top. Lee was to provide you with two customers to provide feedback on work that Parisian Home Improvements had done on metal roofs using the Perlin method, I'd like to hear feedback on myself on that, also Manager Parker, you were going to identify a funding source to offset the general fund contribution. I went ahead because I put in my letter that the federal government could offer some funding, and I checked because you are a municipality and you do have this barn that's preserved. Afraid we don't qualify because it is not a income generating location, so sorry on that, led you, misled you on that. So the other thing was an analysis of the fair market rent and storage space. And Brandon, and I don't remember the other person's name, we're gonna review the site and give their expertise and recommendations, so I'm hoping to hear from all of them, because I know tonight was the deadline, so that's all I have on my list, thank you.
I'll let Manager Parker speak to that, there's been some work done this week, if you have an update during the reports.
Any other comments, public comments from those in the hall? Are there people participating remotely who would like to speak during public comment?
First up is Pam Boyd, followed by Rob Pattinson, Pam?
Good evening, Pam Boyd, a Syo resident, I've been attending meetings for four years, and I do know that we have had a few people who have retired and they've been given praise. I would like to say that Chiefhood is a sign of a true leader with his presentation this evening on the retiring and the promoted firefighters. I would like to, I too would like to see Syo Township honor their employees a little bit better in the future, and I want to give a big round of applause to Chiefhood for how well, a short presentation, but his words spoke volumes, thank you.
Thank you, Pam, next up is Rob Pattinson, followed by David Green, Rob?
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, Syo Township resident. First of all, thank you to Mary Gillis. She has been, every interaction I've had with her over the last several years has been warm and kind and professional. Years ago, when my mother broke her hip and we went to vote. Mom couldn't get out of the car and Mary came out to the car to make sure that mom could vote and was very kind and warm, and, and thank you very much, Mary, for your service. Skip Davis was honored recently, and there's an article in the Sun Times about his fifty-seven years of service to the country and to our community. Syo Township is extremely lucky to have him on our fire department as the fire investigator. I hope we will value his service better in the future, but thank you, Skip, for all those years of service. Congratulations to Captain Bourne and Lieutenant Cobb, and thank you to Captain Burke for all of your years of service in the fire department, most recently at our house. Manager Parker, thank you very much for your call last week. I look forward to an update on the sheriff gate issues and the human resources issues that we talked about and your, your your salary review and salary work with the HR department, I hope that that is treated as a very high priority and we get our I hope that that is treated as a very high priority and we get our, our staff able to get raises based on performance very soon and not just have to rely on the cost of living increases. And that's everything. Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you, Rob. Next up is David K. Davis.
Thank you for, thank you to the board for this time to speak. This is David Reed from SiO Township. I too would like to thank Danny for his decades of service to the township as well as Mary. I know she's, she's really done a lot of work with the township. And I second Rob's appreciation for the other folks that were appreciated, were discussed tonight. But I just want to say that I'm, again, I said I'm David Reed, and I am running for reelection as trustee. I served as township trustee for more than 10 years. Five of those years as a dual role of deputy clerk. During my tenure, I served on a planning commission, land preservation commission, transportation alternative planning. I was a founding member along with former clerk Nancy Hedberg. And I represented the board on numerous countywide committees working on public transportation and public service, or public safety, excuse me. In 2023, I chaired the Fire Services Committee. I'm a staunch proponent of sustainability as well as preservation. I think if, if I'm elected, my goals would be to restore good governance in the township, and the first thing would be to restore the duties and responsibilities of the township officials to what's mandated by the state. And I'd work to give the fire department specifically the public, I should say, give the public safety, especially the fire department, the appropriate resources and staffing and equipment and restore the fiscal checks and balances and within the finance department as well as balanced development and sustainability. I'm hoping to return to board, return to the board to help restore SiO's reputation as the premier township in Washtenaw County. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, David. Anyone else interested in speaking, please raise your Zoom hand. Okay, I see none.
All right. Well, then that brings us to approval of minutes. We have two sets. First set of minutes is special meeting April 23rd, 2024. Are there any corrections to the draft minutes? If not, if someone prepared to move approval of the minutes. So, note by Palmer, support by Riser. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, minutes are approved. The next set of minutes are the regular meeting, April 23rd. Are there any corrections to those minutes?
I would do their adoption.
All right, just moved by Riser. Support by Noel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Supposed, those minutes are approved. Brings us to the consent agenda. We have twelve items. Each aid was removed. Is someone prepared to move approval of the consent agenda?
I would move approval of the consent agenda.
All right, moved by Riser. Support by Noel. Please call the roll.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Prazo?
Yeah.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Consent agenda adopted seven zero.
Brings us to reports. We have a written report from the fire department.
Good evening, board. I think about two minutes of your time, if it's okay. Just a couple of quick things to talk about in the report. Medical calls, about forty percent of our workload. Fires for the first quarter, just over 3%. Hazardous conditions, 7.3%, and about 11% of our calls were car accidents. Various other incident types sprinkled in there. One significant incident I do want to mention, I think I've probably emailed the entire board about this, but on January 3rd, we responded to a structured fire on Prospect Court. That's in Lockalpine subdivision. Fire started in a garage. However, this turned out to be slightly more than a routine fire. The resident had an electric vehicle in the garage. It was a fully electric vehicle. And the fire services is a newer technology for us to deal with. Concerns being thermal runaway of batteries, how long these vehicles are going to burn, and just many other challenges we're still getting a grasp on. Fortunately, we were able to extinguish this fire with significant damage to the home. However, it's a salvageable home. And we did learn in this incident that we're spreading throughout our field that in this type of incident, the vehicle, before we were able to remove it from the garage, had completely consumed all the batteries. So that that hazard had gone away. So interesting learning experience for us. There's going to be many more experiences before we have a grasp on these fires. With that being said, I'd be happy to entertain any other questions about, about the report. I do have a couple of comments regarding open burning it.
On March 10th, there was a structured fire on McGregor. It says a vehicle hit fire in the garage. Was that an electric?
It was not. It was a snowmobile.
Oh.
The owner was, I believe, working on it. The vehicle caught fire, which is not.
Please go ahead.
Chief, I had a question about with the engine being down. How does that, can you talk about the status of where we're at? And how does that impact other jurisdictions being able to call on us and how much we have to call on that?
Sure. So as many of you are aware, our primary engine was down for a little bit. We've had it out of service for about two weeks for repairs. It is fully back in service now. They were able to identify the problem. It was having a really weird issue. Turned out to be corrosion in an electrical connector. Not uncommon for this type of vehicle. It just takes a while to diagnose, trace down, and repair. Repair is pretty simple. They cut four wires, put four new connectors on, but finding it in the hundreds of connectors within the vehicle is difficult. That being said, we're operating our backup engine during that time period. Every year, we have our vehicles serviced and they either go to DOT inspection. During that DOT inspection, was found that a front axle spring was broken. And that engine had to be immediately removed from service. That left us with only our water tanker as our only firefighting vehicle in the township. Definitely had its limitations. However, we got through without, unscathed. Our new tanker that the board has ordered will function perfectly as a backup engine, so we won't have that issue again. Our current tanker is not configured to do the work we need it to. That being said, we can still make it work, although not as efficiently or as effective. As it relates to our neighbors and their needs for mutual aid and how it affects us, as of now, this has not impacted us. It potentially could. If our fleet is to the point where we're not able to respond to mutual aid calls, and we have not had that instance occur, that that causes them to say, well, if SiO can't reciprocate mutual aid, maybe we need to stop reciprocating mutual aid as well. The township found itself in that position early on and well before I arrived here. That's been corrected. We have a good working relationship with all our neighbors. That being said, the board has taken steps to help correct those issues. Any vehicle that we purchase will be able to be at least a dual role vehicle so that we don't find ourselves in a position where we have a vehicle not properly equipped to do the job on.
Are there further questions for Chief?
I was wondering if we could take a minute to just hear a bit about Skip Davis, his lifetime achievement award. Yes, come on. Come on up, Skip.
Before we talk about that, I'd like to say something about the chief. He's done a fabulous job coordinating other fire departments for assistance with their fire investigators. And we've been able to reciprocate with the state police, city of Ann Arbor, Ypsilanti. And it's just something that has been needed for quite a long time. Back in 81, Sheriff's Department put together a fire investigation bureau, which encompassed the entire county. Then it faded away. And now Chief and a few of the other chiefs have got it working again so we can call on, say, YPSY, if I'm going out of town, Chief can get ahold of, help from YPSY, get ahold of veteran from Chelsea, and he can get ahold of the state police to come in. I'll courtesy him. Chief doing a good job on that.
So before I talk a little bit about his work, I think I heard Skip just say he's not going on vacation. So I was actually approached, oh, probably about six weeks ago, by, by representative from Bellefort. And they said that there was a group there that wanted to honor Skip for his years of service. And 57 was the year. Fifty-seven years of public service to our country, to our county, and to our community. A little bit of background on Skip. Skip's a Vietnam veteran. Skip served, I'm not going to get the years right, but Skip served in combat. Skip came back, became a Detroit police officer, which I'd have to think at the time was probably worse combat than Vietnam. Skip then decided to take it easy and come to Washtenaw County, where he worked a full career. Skip then retired from Washtenaw County, but wasn't settled, so he had to go work for the, or the Metro Parks.
I went to U.S. Customs.
I missed a few, I'm sorry.
Then Mylan, then the Metro Parks for 12 years.
And then when he finally retired, he decided he wanted to still investigate fires. So now Skip predates me here, and I will say Skip has been able to find origin and cause. He's uncovered numerous arson's here in the community, things that we might have overlooked years past. And the guy never stops. Sunday, he's going to do the stair climb.
America Park Climber.
I have no idea how he does it, but he keeps going and going and going. Skip's always going to class. Skip's always learning. Skip's helping out our neighbors. And SiO is a safer place because of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Skip.
Skip, what are you doing, you spare kind?
I we have a motor home, and my wife wants to make sure I'm not needed before we go out of town. And I also make sure there's someone to back up. And I let the chief know that so-and-so will cover for me because I cover for them. So traveling and the grandson who's in sports, so.
And you exercise every day. And you walk your dog every day and dizzy.
Good, good, good.
Never stops.
Thank you, Skip. Thank you.
Couple more comments regarding open burning.
Yeah.
So, you know, as we had a resident who'd reviewed our open burning policies and found a number of errors within our ordinance and our policies and such, and brought them to our attention. So we're thankful to rebel to keep, continue to make the right decisions as it comes to the township's ordinance and Eagle regulations. Most recently, it was brought to our attention through this process that Eagle has a pamphlet that considers burning of commercial and industrial waste something that requires an Eagle permit, that's Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, State Department. So we didn't research too deeply into that. And it was our assumption, and it was a bad assumption, that specific businesses within the community who burn natural products as a result of their business. For example, if we have a tree trimming business and they were to trim some trees, bring the product back to the yard and burn them, we assumed that that would be commercial or industrial waste and be required to have a permit from Eagle. We've reached out to Eagle and found that to be incorrect. Eagle only regulates commercial and industrial waste as man-made products. So that is left up to SiO to regulate. There is one business in particular that does this quite often. We've been out there working with them to make sure that they're meeting the ordinance requirements. And when they do burn, we observe to make sure the smoke's not creating a nuisance. It's my opinion that the existence of smoke does not constitute a nuisance. But if that smoke is interfering with, say, traffic or neighboring homes or businesses, it would be a nuisance. When we get out and respond to any burning call, we evaluate those situations individually. What's the impact that the burning is having on the occupants' neighbors? And at that point, we would ask, put it out if we determined it was a nuisance. This particular instance, we have about each time they burn, we evaluate three times throughout the day. Make sure that, you know, they're burning within ordinance requirements and that there's no nuisance caused by the smoke and let them do what they can do. I'd be happy to answer any questions about that subject as well.
I just want to thank you for staying on top of it and getting us into compliance as our underspelling evolves. I also want to thank you and Skip both for, not just your good work as an investigator, but bringing back the function of investigating fires to SiO. I mean, that was done, I think, 2019-ish around there. And then, you know, 2021, you brought back the function of fire inspection, you know, both which were core functions that we hadn't been performing. So thank you.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Chief. That brings us to regular reports. There are a bundle of prepared written reports in the meeting materials. Are there any comments, questions regarding reports?
I'm excited and have my list there. But I normally do. Sorry about that.
It's okay. If
What was that?
Just want to go around. If anyone has comments, why don't we do that? Why don't we go around? Trustee Carrie?
For reports?
Yeah, any comments or questions?
Sean, are you in the market for a boat?
I am not. That subject has until Thursday to have it gone. And if not, he'll be receiving an assignment. He is aware of that.
Are you involved with the Pizza Hut?
I am not. That was handled prior to my arrival.
Yeah. So, have you driven by lately? It's pretty much cleaned up. It's amazing. Years of flight and so, thank you. It just, it was a coincidence that you came along and then it disappeared.
Of course, I didn't have anything to do with it.
Thank you.
I think it's safe to say a lot of people, over time, complained and worked out it, and eventually there was a response. I'm glad to know that it's cleaned up because I was a little worried about the pile of debris after they knocked it down. Further comments or questions?
Sean, I thank you for your excellent written reports. Just your great.
Trustee Noel?
I'll thank you also. No, I was just not.
On any, on any report, on any report that is in the box.
Oh, I don't have an update on Gallman.
Okay.
That's what you meant.
It could be anything. Any comment or question?
Sure, yeah, just a quick update. The cleanup event went really well at the Hopkins Cemetery. We had about 35, 40 people amazingly came out, worked really hard. And I want to thank the Daughters, Sons of the Revolution and Jaden Song, who is the Boy Scout, getting his Eagle Scout badge, first certification, forgive me, Rob Pattinson. I don't know what it is. For organizing the event. There were a lot of people from SiO there. Jim Noel, David Reed, Kathleen Brand, Scott Hedberg. And we made a ton of progress in four hours. So there'll probably be one, one more work day. They unearthed a lot of headstones. Lucas Larson did a nice article, and I'm live showing some of the pictures. And it was nice to talk to some of the people who serve as septons for other townships for these historic cemeteries and just to kind of get a sense programmatically if SiO Township wanted to kind of take on any ongoing responsibility in the future for this kind of waterway take. So that's something that I'm thinking about. I think we have So that's something that I'm, uh, thinking about, I think we have three. Historic cemeteries that I know of, um, in SIO, but this one Hopkins is the only one I know of that was kind of abandoned.
Hey, well, um, I don't have anything, uh, to report myself, but I am looking forward to our township manager's report, uh, the sale of the farm. Which, uh, closed on Monday, uh. Treasurer.
Uh, you all have a written report, plus I want to add, we got the settlement sheet from the colony, which is part of the final process. And we balanced to the penny. So we verified it and I have to sign it and it's been sent back. Yes, yes.
Thank you, trustee Ryzer.
Um, it's, I passed it out, it, uh, planning commission. Um, we, uh, took up the stabler road, park road, inclusion, not improvement, but the division, uh, to the, uh, the culvert. And the planning commission, as I say in my report, uh, of, of recommended approval with some modifications. They also took up again, um, revising SIO Township's zoning chapter thirty-six. Ordinance with respect to renewable energy based on the state, so that's a, gonna be a process much like. J-Rod is a process or things like that, so we'll be talking, we'll bring something back when it's ready to be brought back and so, uh. Go to the planning commission, uh, meeting, you'll see the latest iteration of what's proposed there.
I have a question, John, on the PPP. It's just one of the things I, I was, I'm glad to see the PPP in favor of adding a land acknowledgement. To the sign in the SIO Township parks, I think that that's an issue that is. Substantive enough, important enough, multi-dimensional, needs to come to the pair of trustees. So we can do some education and discussion and think about kind of where it permeates across the organization.
The exact verbiage, where it goes, the format, all of that.
What it means, why we do it, where we do it, because of, because I, I, it's, it's not just for park signs and, and I would also say. On that note too, I think, and this was a while ago, I can't remember particularly the issue, I think it was around. Um, park rules, you know, park rules, anything like that also needs to come to the board, but.
They, they only did park signs because that's the.
So I don't know, Chris is working on this or who?
No, that was.
Running point.
It was just a resolution in favor, that's something we'll have to follow up with Joyce and this board and.
Yeah, the, the meeting, uh, the intent was, I believe, to have it come to the board, but the proximity of their meeting to this meeting made it too, too short.
Yeah, 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 no rush, no rush.
You know, it's possible we'd be ready to bring something back at the next board.
I just didn't know what was working on it, but that's great.
Trustee Brzezak, any further comments or questions? Manager Paul, I'm Parker.
So, um, supervisor Hathaway had mentioned that, um, we closed on the, uh, farm property this week, it was this Tuesday. And, um, as you all are aware, the, the sale price was three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, of that, we paid about twenty-two thousand dollars related to expenses like the commission. And other expenses associated with the closing, but, uh, everything went well. Uh, the person that purchased the property, um, has a construction background. And, and the intent is for that person and their family to reside there at the site, so that was really encouraging. The other thing related to the property is that it has the historic designation and, uh. The purchaser, uh, signed the document as part of the closing stating that. He would be in compliance with those restrictions related to the historic designation. And then as you are aware, there were two restrictions, um. Uh, provided by the township, one related to the use and the other related to splitting the property up. And so the person also agreed based on the way the property was needed to him. And so it was, I thought it was a good transaction, everything went well, uh, I immediately took the check and. The treasurer, so we can get it into our accounts.
That's funny.
Way to go, congratulations, thank you everybody.
Yes, it was a, yeah, team effort.
I'm so glad it sold.
I'm glad we found a good steward and, and seems like, um, a good match and it is encouraging that there's a family living there again.
Yeah, I think it's a real positive and it will go back on the tax bill as well.
Yeah. Supervisor Hathaway, um. Trustee Ryzer mentioned culverts. Um, regarding the, the culvert grant, how, what is going on with that?
Well, I plan to bring that to the board, uh, at our next meeting too, that was another thing that came kind of late after the. Uh, agenda was assembled, so since it wasn't a rush, um, I, I thought we would bring that to the next regular meeting.
Okay. As long as we make sure it gets through.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, no, I, I, I very much want to see it, us move forward, I guess, uh, to elaborate, uh, we, I, I, it had. Uh, previously I'd understood that the, uh, culvert projects would be done next construction season, not this current construction season. Um, the most recent communications from the, uh, road commission are that at least two of them can be done. During this construction season and they would like to do them during this construction season, so that will require, um, more than just accepting. Uh, the, the grants, it will be, it will require some, um, maybe a budget amendment, I'm not sure, I don't think. I don't know that we have that much in our budget for culvert repair.
I think we allocated that during the budget, at least the.
I, I, I think you're right.
Do we have enough to cover all three?
We'll have to go. I think we, we considered the, um, local share related to the, you know, the replacement of the culvert, so.
Oh, well then, less of a lift than I thought.
I agree, I think we did include that information.
Yeah, we'll double check though.
Yeah. In any case, it came kind of late, so, and it didn't seem urgent enough to warrant trying to add it to the agenda.
The grants, you know, keeping track of all the grants and when they have to be in and I just want to make sure that we.
Yep.
Because that's a good chunk of money, um, thank you, Sean, for your.
Report. We have one other item too.
Please.
Uh, Mrs. Stein had asked about, uh, the friends of the SIO barn. And we did have a meeting, um, after the last meeting with, uh, members of that group. At that point in time, there was a discussion related to, um. The, the contractor to repair the roof and we also had, uh, our utilities director involved. And we agreed as part of that meeting to, um, have, um, Brandon McNeil, our utility director, kind of take the lead. Related to, um, the replacement of the roof. And since that time, um, he's met with. The, uh, contractor, the roofer, he's also checked references, uh. The, uh, roofer decided to decline moving forward. And so we're in the process right now of obtaining, uh, other bids and also reaching out. To the other, uh, company that submitted a bid to see if they're interested. So that information will be coming back to the board. Uh, the other thing we're looking at is related to establishing, um, the value, the market value. Related to the property and, uh, the uses in order to determine. You know, if the amount that we receive through the friends is adequate or not, and we also requested. A legal opinion related to the agreement that we have with the friends to determine. What the next step should be given the circumstances, and so that's the status as it stands right now.
There are no further questions or comments for the reports?
Just a, a, a comment, I hope we can soon, I don't know which meeting, that's one or the one after. Here back on the rest of the transit recommendations. Um, we had that committee and so many more about kind of where we were gonna continue, you know, to talk about those, I'd like to, when the time's right, to, to. Get that back, because we were only able to take action on one of their eight. Okay. Recommendations.
We're meeting Friday.
Oh, right, we're gonna meet this Friday.
Okay, in that case, let's move forward, um, the next is unfinished business and the first item is the. Possible action on a pollinator pilot project, so I will turn to trustee Ryzer to introduce this agenda data.
Thank you very much, this is, uh, something I brought up, uh, a couple meetings ago, I, um. This is. To see if. It'll work. SIO Township has a commitment to the environment through our land preservation, through purchasing farmland. On June first, we're going to have a native planting at the fire department, we're advertising, uh, uh, an earlier native plant sale. Um, we're talking in the PPP about a prairie restoration on the Van Curler. Uh, that would be a controlled burn and a planting, so, so native plants, we're trying to do what we can for the environment. And a big part of that is pollinators, so SIO Township has several vacant parcels. Some of which might be appropriate for beekeepers, not so that they can monetize our land and get honey from it. But so that the bee population, so that pollinators can go out and do what they do. For the benefit of the environment, for the benefit of the lands, the flowers, um, and, and the, the benefit frankly of all the residents. I, I point to you, Stephanie King, uh, sent an email wherein she talked about. Pollinator populations declining due to habitat loss and, and, and supporting pollinator health and she. Wrote eloquently, I thought, a, a, about how it creates habitats, it promotes native plant, uh. Cross pollination, genetic diversity, ecosystem resilience and, um, there are a lot of resources locally. A, A two B two, there's the Sembah Southeastern Michigan Beekeeping Association, there is Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development, there is. Michigan State University through the extension system as well as through the API program and. This might, we might not get anybody that wants to do this. We might only get a couple people, it might be something that it doesn't work, it's too much work, they didn't like it and it doesn't work for two thousand and twenty-five. So what I'm proposing is that we do a resolution in support of establishing something for this year. We'll have to come up with a policy, I realize that the devil's in the details. And I'm not here to dictate what those details should be, I'm not a beekeeper. This came out of a conversation that I had with a fellow planning commission member who happens to have bees. He doesn't need the land himself, but he was talking about what a good parcel. In an industrially zoned, not near people, that would be good for bees to pollinate the trees and all the flowers. So I'm asking for support to try this thing for this year, um, and, and to develop a policy. I will say, I, there's something on the front page, while the actual policy will be drafted by the SIO Township supervisor, I. I meant to write township administrator, in other words, it would be the administrator, township staff, subject matter experts. Uh, board members if they're interested and all vetted by a legal counsel. So that, that, that supervisor's a typo, my apologies, that should have.
Administrator or manager?
Team manager, see, I, that's why I, I should have just wrote Joyce. Yeah. No offense, Will, no, but I, I meant the manager, see, that's where I, I know I didn't want to write, yeah, anyways. So, so, um. So, so that's all the introduction, uh, it's the whereas clauses and it talks about, um, commercial and residential development, invasive plants, all the impact on shrinking bee. Populations, it talks about SIO Township being committed to preserving farmland, open space and wildlife habitat. It talks about, we have several parcels, I have a map, three maps attached, that's just the demonstrative exhibit, I don't have anything in mind. Uh, any parcel in mind, I mentioned a couple just by way of examples. What, it, it'll ultimately be up to this board, it'll be up to the policy to determine what it, uh, what it should be. I also know that from talking to beekeepers in the Southeastern Michigan Beekeepers Association, I've been talking to Professor Megan Milbrath. My December thirty-first isn't realistic, uh, bees should winter over. Uh, that's what you get when you have a lawyer write a bee policy or a resolution, so, so that needs to be changed to. March or first or February or some date or, or maybe on the removed, removed by an appropriate date, that, we, we don't, I, I, I'm not. I'm not trying to dictate what date it should be, it should be based on beekeeping, beekeeping, I did, that was kind of a place filler there. Um, so, um, I know that, uh, there was some concern or some inquiry about, is this. A, an improper expenditure where we're trying to, uh, let, give, let someone use our land for free. And, and it isn't intended to benefit individual beekeepers, it's intended to let individual beekeepers. Have bees there to benefit our neighbors, the township, the environment, the plants, that's, that's my intention on this. I will say that Ipsy Township has had these, they grew them themselves through volunteers in Ipsy Township. Pittsfield Township in two thousand and sixteen allowed, uh, an API in Seifried Park and they had. They had six, they had six, uh, hives placed, uh, near, near, uh. Um, I forget the road there, might be Maple Road, Maple Road in, in, in Pittsfield Township, so. I'm, like I say, asking for support so that we can develop a policy and, uh. Administer that policy to the extent that there are people who are, uh, interested in doing it.
One, one, I think, critical comment, so I am a hundred percent support, ironically, I found this out last night, one of my investors. Uh, he used to be a professional baseball player at one time, he had a, a dual career, actually started a thing called Creating Habitats.org. They specifically do this, they've got fifty-two sites across four states. They do the plants, the, the specific wildflowers, it's all at dot org, five oh three, five one C three. And they figure out, they, they figured all these problems that John has mentioned, they've kind of figured all that out. So I just wired him to John last night, I'm like, hey. I know somebody who needs this, that's ironically, I don't know how it even came up, oh, that's right, he told me what he's doing, I'm like, wait a minute. This could be a justice, so my recommendation would be, or courage would be, I think we move forward with this pilot, maybe get these folks involved. Because again, they've done this fifty-two times, I can tell them what the pitfalls are on the bees hive, nut hive, where they go, but they figured all the. Where the honey goes and how they reuse the honey, because I asked about, well, do you have to worry about profitees, they got all that figured out. What all that is, I don't know, he sent me even a pitch deck. About this, so that would be my augment to that, is hey, why don't we, if we're gonna do this, let's do, do it with somebody who's. Again, done this fifty-two times before, they've done eight acres. Plan, that's a lot, it's all volunteer based. So he's not doing this for, he's, he's retired, so he's just doing this to help the world, really good even being. Unlike some of my other investors who are returning, uh, so, uh, this, this one's a good, a good one.
Could you share that information with the board?
Yeah, I'll, I'll forward you guys, forward, forward the, forward the deck, but it's called Creating Habitats.org.
Does he have, he, he must have a website?
He does, yeah, Creating Habitats.org, he's out of Columbia, Michigan, though. So he's right in our backyard, ironically, I mean. Who knew? I mean, and the funny part is you meet this guy, professional baseball player, probably weighs about six-six, about three-twenty, huge, big guy, you know, it's a big, strong guy doing. Flowers, just kind of, but it's all good.
Flowers, everybody likes them.
No, it's great, and since when you meet him, you hear his career background, you just wouldn't think flowers, it wouldn't be the first thing that came to mind. So anyways, uh, so that's, it's called again, um, Creating Habitats.org, I think it can help augment John's initiative. And give us some of these things that we're kind of unsure about, it'd help us give us guidance in, in, in those areas, so just throw it out there. And I'll, I'm gladly forward this email to folks and this pitch deck that he sent, I've gotten a horse in this race other than just trying to help out.
Thank you, so since we started at this, then why don't we go to you next, uh.
As to what I think.
Yeah, well, or any questions you have for trustee Ryzer?
I'd say we get it. Yes. I have flowers, we have, I have one of those backyards that's got lots of clover in it. So we need.
Thank you, um, so I, I have a question, I just want to clarify, so if I understand correctly, the, what you're proposing, uh, John, is to have, um. A policy developed.
And implemented.
And, and implemented. And implemented, but will the policy come back to the board before implementation?
It could, it could, and maybe it shouldn't, since this is so novel. I think it should. I think it should come back to this board.
So sort of, in a sense, we're kind of launching an effort to come back.
Resolution in favor of an idea, but the devil's in the details. The policy could say, see Brezoz 501C3 for implementation. I, I, I don't, not, I say that, I don't mean that. But my point is, this is just a resolution in support of an idea that we need to think about how we execute.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm in support of moving it forward. And I'm particularly supportive of having the policy come back to the board once it's got a little bit more sort of form to it, yes.
Yeah. So thank you, John, for bringing this idea forward. I don't think this resolution is quite where it needs to be. So for tonight, I would be supportive of a motion to do some research into coming up with the right idea to support pollinators. When I read this, there's a couple of things. And I talked to folks at Ipsy Township and Pittsfield Township as well. I have my first beehive this year, and I have a bee ant or from the folk school. And so it just so happened to be when this was all, all coming into. And so I think when I, you know, everything I've read about, you know, the harms to pollinators. It's about pesticide, it's lack of flowers. I haven't ever read any research anywhere that said, you know, pollinators are hurt by lack of space for beekeepers. That may be true, but I have never seen that. So I just want to like define what's the problem we want to solve here. And I want to help pollinators. I know that there's proven methods to do that. And I know the Planning Commission's doing a lot of that, you know, requiring more native plantings. And, you know, we can do a lot more here at Township Hall and in our parks and preserves. I haven't heard, I haven't seen anything. I'd be open to it because it may be there, John. I'm certainly not read a ton about this stuff. But I haven't seen any research that said giving more space to beekeepers is what's needed. Now, a second, so kind of on the goals there, I think if we want to help pollinators, I'd like to get together a group because bees don't appear anywhere in our pros plan. We haven't really thoughtfully considered it. Certainly they help conservation. And I think there's room for bees and maybe beekeeping. But I want to make sure that we come up, that we get clear on the goals here. Because the goal for this reads a little more like, you know, creating space for beekeepers and hoping it helps the pollinators versus what do we know really helps pollinators? I also want to say on the kind of administrative side of this, and I know I mentioned this at our prior meeting, because it is new, this is, you know, this resolution would put a ton of work on our staff. And I want to get clear on what the goal is here. Like, is it to help our pollinators? Is it to help beekeepers? And so I would definitely say that, you know, the resolve clauses here, you know, we want to pull together a group, come up with a policy, you know, proposed recommendations for the board about what's going to help pollinators. That sounds great. When I explored the Pittsfield and Ipsy models, and I talked to Matt Vass, their Parks Director at Pittsfield today, he said that was in 2016, that was about a year or two. And it was a group and it was a nonprofit who had it. They managed it, it fizzled out. He said that he's been very resistant to allowing hives on township property because of all these, the devil in the details thing.
Yeah, but.
And not that it can't be overcome. It could be. They just haven't figured it out yet.
We just have a lot more open space with our acreage.
Absolutely. And then, and then Ipsy Township, I talked to the deputy supervisor there who personally, along with a couple other staff people, they voluntarily, because they love beekeeping. So it's kind of like at Township Hall. So I could imagine if we had a Parks Director or you or somebody who personally wanted to kind of take it on. But it makes me a little nervous to have like bees that were responsible for kind of out in one of our preserves where we're relying on outside parties to kind of take care of them. I also want to say, you know, the letter of support, which was very eloquent from Stephanie, that is the same people who have asked the township about purchasing a portion of that preserve for their beekeeping. And so I just want to, you know, name the elephant in the room that, you know, we have had somebody. And if somebody is interested, a resident in leasing land from us, that could make sense. But pitching it as kind of a pilot project of the township when we don't know what it is yet, I don't want to take on that responsibility until we get clear on the goals and a reasonable administrative structure.
And I appreciate, I'm sorry, I'll let you go around.
Yeah, I thought we were gonna.
Why don't we go around and if you want to respond.
Yeah, thank you.
Please go forward.
The idea sounds good, but I think we need more time and there needs to be more investigation and a little more definition. Perhaps looking at the Pittsfield model. I also want to call your attention to City of Ann Arbor has this pollinator aware yard care information on their website. They are bee sitting.
I'm familiar, yeah.
So this is very interesting. I mean, they talk about protecting pollinators through native plantings, reduced mowing, and minimizing or decreasing certain pesticides. I mean, there are so many other pieces of information, pieces of things that we could do to facilitate helping pollinate.
That are proven.
Yes. So I'm just, what you're saying sounds interesting and good. I think it needs more work, but there's a lot we could be doing above and beyond bees to facilitate pollinators.
I agree. Natas, I.
By the way, this is called Creating Habitats for Pollinators. I should have mentioned that. That's what it's actually called, it's actually what's it. So it's all about creating the right, to your point, creating that right habitat, which I don't know what it is. But it's not just, yeah, it's not just putting up a beehive. It's, to your point, it's a little more than that.
Let's keep making our way around. Trustee Noel.
I'm done.
Okay. Trustee Karen.
Yeah, as everybody probably knows, I have a background in farming and yard, and I don't use any chemicals. Or I should say, I live 95% chemical free. And my yard is just full of, I had caterpillars and butterflies last year. In fact, I was giving away larvae for kids, yeah, and others. So I am totally for the environment. That's where we come from, is nature. However, this is public land. And number one, we need to show where the law provides that we are allowed to do something like this. Allow private citizens on public land. We can't do it unless we have, there's, we have to have a clear plan. And if we lease, this opens up on public property. It opens us up to liability. We have to check with our insurance company. Also, if we lease, then we could lose our tax exempt exemption from that property. There's, I've done some research, there is the Land Bureau of Land Management. They actually have a permitting program for a private and commercial so that they can keep bees on public land. It's a strict program. They have to be permitted and they have to pay money every year. That is reasonable. So going back to what does the township want? Well, we don't even have policies for residents to keep bees, nowhere. So to jump to say, okay, let's go to public land and start beekeeping or allowing certain people, then I don't understand why we're not promoting this for residential. And also, the city of Ipsy and the township, they keep their own bees. They do not allow public or private people to keep bees on their property. The golf course was the, one of the maintenance persons were keeping bees and they all died last, last winter. And they're not even sure if they're going to have bees again. It's really hard. Also, raising, there's different types of bees. So we have our native bees and we also have honeybees. Honeybees are only kept for honey. There's no other reason. I mean, well, they do pollinate some, but they also push out the native bees. And, you know, there's, we're, that's declining. So there's a lot to think about all of this. We do need pollinators, but I believe that if we're going to start pollinating or encouraging pollinators, first of all, and in the township, we need to start with Township Hall. I was looking at the DDA contract for the, what was it, KVK or the Meridians? We're spraying pesticides. We also, we know that pesticides kill bees. I watched my neighbor hire a company this past week, just spraying a hose of pesticides. And I'm freaking out because I'm protective of my property. But, you know, there's just a lot to this. And number three, we need to have an attorney research everything for us and to make sure that we are following the law. Because the Constitution, you know, Article, what is it, nine, section 18? The court determined that a gift or donation of money or other property by a municipality would constitute a violation of the Constitution. So if we allow private people to go onto our property and just let them use it, it is a violation of the Constitution. So. And lastly, we have staff that is already, we're growing, we're throwing more work at our staff. And that's really concerning for me. We have more important, and I wouldn't say more important, but we have very important issues that we need to take care of. And I would hate to, again, have our staff work on something when it's not as important as water or fire or whatever. Oh, and I did talk with Chief Hood, I asked him or emailed him. He, you know, they're putting the pollinators in over, or pollinating gardens or whatever over.
Native plants.
Native plants and, oh, sorry, I don't want to smack you. By the solar array and all of that. And I asked if we could keep bees maybe behind the garage. And he pointed out that there's children next door and they do place sometimes behind that. And we don't want to expose them to a possible sting allergy. But I think that overall, this is a great idea. But we should really start with our residents and encouraging less pesticides, less mowing. I'm all for that. Who wants to mow? And also, you know, more, more native plants and not just bees, though. There's, there's other things that also.
Pollinates.
Yes.
And I, and I would just say, I would be supportive of a motion to get a group together to look at like, what can we do to support pollinators? Because, John, it's super important. I just, you know, this resolution is really just about, you know, placing beehives. And it's not a more kind of broad, more broad set of strategies for pollinators.
Let's turn back to the offer of the agenda item, the resolution to respond.
And I appreciate that. And I don't, I didn't want to bite off more than I could chew. And I appreciate that we could have, and maybe we should have, an ordinance that allows beekeeping under certain circumstances of parcels of certain sizes. Or that we, that bans chemicals or pesticides or native plants. I realize that we could do more. I just wanted to start with this. And I certainly don't want to violate the Constitution. And I'm sure that Fink and Fink wouldn't say, whoa, Reiser, you're going, you're getting knocked too far over your skis on that. But I know that we have proper, private property on which, I'm sorry, we have public property on which we let private people use it. The Flyers is an example of that. The Friends of the Scioto Barn is an example of that. I'm not saying there's not leases, but I'm saying people, people use our, people use our land. With respect to Stephanie King who sent that email, and while she may have a beehive, this isn't intended for the likes of her to build a business on our land. This is intended to be getting bees out into the community. So I, it doesn't have all the details. And I don't know that it should have all the details before we pass a resolution in support of an idea. I don't need that to vote in favor of it. If some of you do, some of you do. Now, it's not going to kill me if, you know, kill me isn't the right word, but my point is, we haven't had bees yet. And there's no rush to get bees, you know, this month. It would be nice if they could be placed out in the 2024 season for a, for a pollinator project season. But I also don't want Joyce or Chris or our new Parks person and to be inundated. We're not in the beekeeping business. I don't have the, I don't have the Ipsy Ullani Township model in mind. That's where township employees are keeping bees. Maybe they didn't winter over because you got guys who run a golf course tending to bees in the winter rather than beekeepers with several years of experience. I don't know. Sometimes bees just don't winter over from what I've been told.
The ones that are township hall are fine, that the deputy supervisor's looking after.
Yes. So I guess you all bring up excellent points, great points. And I think those are the details that can be filled in as a policy that gets, that gets drafted by those who know these things and it gets brought back. So if we need to excise certain resolved paragraphs and if we need to add something that the Township Administrator or that the committee shall bring, bring it back to the board for approval, that's something we can do.
I mean, John, I would be open to, you know, supporting a motion to say, let's look at this idea more. I just think that the problem with, I have with this resolution is all the resolve clauses, so many of them are so specific. And to resolve even to develop a policy, to have them implement the policy, accept the applications, have our council and manager decide on a policy to go through the whole process, that the hives get placed in 2024 and then removed at whatever date. And with the whole removal, that right there, like, was a signal to me, and I may be wrong, I'll ask my bee mentor. But truly, when I see the removal of hives, that's about honey. That's about moving the hives around and, and that's about honey production. And that's not necessarily.
My intention in that was because it's a pilot program and I wasn't trying to create an expectation that if you do it for the one year, it's in perpetuity.
Exactly. That makes sense. And I'm thinking of it as habitat. And so if we wanted to kind of focus in on, like, maybe there's a place at Township Hall at one of our preserves, at a place, and I would take like the recommendation of, you know, our parks or preservation people who know more, but maybe there's a place to start the habitat.
Look, this guy does this stuff for a living. Why don't, why don't, I just, my suggestion would be, maybe table it. Take a look at the thing I just said, this nonprofit, this guy's done it 52 times or four across four states. I'm sure he's encountered all these issues that you brought up, which are, I think legitimate concerns. I'm not trying to mitigate any of them. You got somebody who's just done this before, that's all I'm saying. And can say, ooh, don't do that, or watch, watch that. That's all I'm saying.
I'm not opposed to tabling. We haven't had bees yet.
Why don't we just, why don't we postpone this and allow for some more time for more?
Yeah, I forward it all to you. You guys all got it.
Well, I don't know that we need to go all the way around. It seems like we're searing in on an action.
Well.
I just kind of wrap up the conversation.
Yeah, I had a couple of people who have said more and a couple more people might want to say.
Go ahead, trustee Noel.
So I'm hearing that there is interest in this idea, but maybe a more comprehensive approach focused on pollinator aware yards or whatever, pollinator aware habitat in Scioto Township. I don't know. But it's not just bees. It's the general approach to enhancing pollinators and protecting them. Your native plantings, reduce mowing, decreasing pesticides, et cetera. I mean.
I would also, I don't mind postponing, I don't mind referring this to a committee.
Are we working it?
Of course. Would you work with me on it?
I, I will work on a pollinator policy. Something that's demonstrated to help pollinators, which may not necessarily be unless research shows otherwise promoting beekeeping.
Okay, is that?
I'll throw a last one here. I can ask Dave Lewis in Florida, I can see if he can come in here and give us a little presentation when he's done.
Right. But beekeeping is not necessary, I mean. Right, but beekeeping is not necessary, I mean, it just, so yes, John.
But it's to your point, it's about a whole ecosystem development, a whole ecosystem of the bees, it's not just the bees, it's a whole entire ecosystem.
How about, how about sending the, the proposal to a, a discussion possibly involving, I would suggest the subcommittee of the Environmental Sustainability Task Force that is focused on agriculture.
Yeah, where we have some experts.
And, and maybe inviting your colleague to come and meet with that group rather than, rather than turning the board of trustees into a, a kind of a subcommittee for this purpose.
Got it, sure, whatever you guys think.
Is that, is that okay?
Yes, this is, and I, I, I want an idea and if the idea gets better because of the input that you folks bring to the table, that's great.
All right, so, so.
Jessica, or excuse me, Julian wanted to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, Julian.
Yeah, and you know, with public land, if it's open and the Sciop Flyers, that, that's Township Hall land, right?
Yes.
And they're using that, but so is everybody else. It's open to everybody. So the public has purchased our, our, our public land, so it should be open to everybody. So if we had like a community garden with pollinators, that's open to everybody, anybody could be. Not everybody has to, but it would be open to them. So that's an idea, but then again, it would have to fall under like Parks and Rec and then staff. So that's where we're, we're back and it just, it always ties back to the public use. And how it, and we can, we can say, well, bees benefit the public. Well, yeah, but so do chickens, so can we keep chickens on public land? You know, so this is where the difference is not so much about the bees being beneficial because they are. It's about the use of public land and how it benefits the public because they have paid for it.
But to a, quite chickens with bees is almost silly.
Oh, well, John, now you're twisting things.
Is how, is how bees pollinate, flower bees leave, pollinate and come back.
That's not the point.
The point is, is the public.
I brought earwax, we are.
We'll, we'll stop on this, man. We'll stop on this.
So a motion to postpone perhaps would be in order? If someone wanted to make a motion to postpone, oh, motion by Brazil, is there support, support by Noel? All those in favor say.
I have clarification. Postpone until when?
It doesn't have to be a date certain, we can just postpone.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay.
You're okay with that, John?
Yes, long as there's work done.
There's desire to move forward.
We have said it, but and we can, we can work from there. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For the post, motion to postpone passes. That brings us to the next item under unfinished business, which is the Washtenaw County Road Commission 2024 Updated Agreement. I believe trustee Carrie, this was your item?
Julian, I'm sorry, what?
We're on your item.
Road Commission Agreement? Oh, yeah. Yay. Finally, because it took Joyce, how many months have we trying to, been trying to finalize this? So the agreement that came in front of the board back in December was just a placeholder because we needed to secure the ARPA funds. There was something about securing those ARPA funds and then we get more state funding, you got it. Yeah, okay. So anyways, that was just a placeholder, we just, we knew that that, the the project list was going to change. So that went back in front of the Road Advisory Committee early in, I think it was January, or the beginning of January and then February, we've worked on this. So we worked off of the the ten-year township, township-wide schedule. So every, so often we would do different roads. But then we also decided to, we had some residents that were complaining for a long time about their roads and one of them was the Laurentide Park Ridge paving and that was actually one of the top roads listed in MLive a few years ago as the worst, one of their, one of the top fifteen worst roads. So anyway, we were able to include that. Let's see, the Buena Vista Neighborhood Tubbs Road. And if anybody knows about Tubbs Road, it's, it's the topography is kind of crazy. It's a natural beauty road. They want to, it is really beautiful, but it's on a hill, it's very hilly and then it arose. So we couldn't wait, that was removed for some reason and Park Ridge was put on, so we couldn't, we couldn't wait for Tubbs to, for another year. Also, the Lamp lighter Pheasant Drive and Deerfield Place, they went through the sad process a few years ago to have their road paved, actually. The estimate came back a lot higher, it was close to, I think, four hundred fifty thousand dollars, so they declined on doing the paving. But they really, they haven't had a gravel uplift since, actually never, only when they put the neighborhood in, so it's really bad over there. Delhi Court is, well, Delhi Court is off of East Delhi and what's at the end?
There's a, a parking area for people who are doing the canoe lifting and so there's a lot of traffic on, on the Delhi Court.
Yes, we verified with the, the Road Commission that that project will not be complete until the, sorry, the border to border construction over there is complete, something like that. And then also there's dying road. If there's any money left over, because the Road Commission always estimates high, there's leftover, then Park Ridge would be the, would have a gravel uplift.
The unpaved.
The, yes, the unpaved, so we're crossing our fingers on that one. So anyways, this is the, the list and hopefully the board will approve it and it needs to be approved. The Road Commission has a deadline of May and we were ready, but the Road Commission was still trying to figure out some things. So we just need to have this approved and then signed by the supervisor and clerk to, to start construction.
So is someone prepared to make the model motion to approve the Washtenaw County Road Commission 2024 Updated Agreement?
So moved.
Support.
By risers, support by Knowles, there further discussion?
Yes. I just wanted to make a comment. I just wanted to, to note that it's all coming from roads, but it's five hundred and twenty thousand from ARPA with the remainder from the general fund of eighteen thousand, so just so everybody knows if there's any overage, the rest will be general fund. And that is exactly how we budgeted it this year.
Oh, right. I just want the board to be aware that if there's any add-ons, any change orders from the Road Commission, it will be general fund. But they, yeah, and generally they, as I said, they estimate high and it usually doesn't go over, but it was simply.
It could, it could.
Yeah, it could.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that clarification. If there's no further comment, please call the roll.
Palmer?
Yes.
Lintoff? Yes. Brazil? Carrie? Yes. Noel? Yes. Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right, that brings us to new business. The first item is K1, says approval of a conditional offer of employment to Zachariah Cole for utilities field technician. And this was prepared by Aurora. Aurora, do you want to come forward too or?
Come on up.
You have Brandon and I'm assuming Zachariah and.
Great, hi Zachariah, thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Aurora, do you want to introduce it and then Brandon, if you wanted to add anything?
Sure, this is of course Zachariah Cole. Comes from the city of Celine with five plus years of W experience. And as I'm not as familiar with it, I'll have Brandon go ahead.
Yeah, so at Celine there, more of a general DPW, so he does do water and sewer there. However, there are added responsibility as far as plowing. I think they have a cemetery they take care of and many other things that they do, but he does have water and sewer experience from there that we were really looking for and on top of that, he put five years in with Hoffmann's Incorporated. They do underground utility, new installations, so he's done that for five years, which brings a wealth of information to our staff as we have a little bit of a gap there with experience as far as underground goes, so that's nice to have that knowledge from Zach to be brought here. On top of that, just the interview went well. You tell that he's really committed to this type of field with his five years being with Hoffmann's Incorporated doing underground utilities and we look forward to having him here and we hope he supports us.
Thank you.
Questions or comments?
No, I just want to say, you've got great experience, I mean, more than ten years of experience and yeah, just really excited to support the motion.
So the model motion is to approve a conditional offer of employment to Zachariah Cole for sixty thousand three hundred and twenty dollars a year to serve as utilities field technician for Sciop Township subject to a satisfactory background and reference checks and drug test. Is someone prepared to make the model motion?
I'll make it.
Make it, so, the motion by Noel, support by Riser, please call the roll.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Brazil?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
All right, motion adopted seven zero.
Welcome aboard.
I have a question right away. Which do you prefer, Zach or Zachariah?
Either Zach's easier to follow, so that's why I go by, so. My syllable, you know. Not to do with this, I didn't get a chance to ask, there was one other agenda item that I was hoping to see tonight and I didn't know if it was figured out without having to be brought here, the fence for the pump station.
Oh, that was between you and Mariah and Joyce?
I was just seeing if there was anything on that. It's no big deal if there's not, I was just curious.
No, I, I was, I thought that it was coming also and I was told that you were bringing it, so that, that's just a.
I was not, I mean, I don't know where I'm not.
Yeah, I'll just bring it to the next regular meeting.
Next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Welcome, Ben.
Brandon? I'm sure you get the fence, use bees to keep people alive.
Some, some, was that a Japanese hornet?
Okay, so that brings us to the, the next item, which is K2, possible action on the University Flower Shop Conditional Use number two four zero zero one. I believe we have Laura participating remotely.
Laura, I'm sure you can hear this panelist, anybody else?
I'm not sure, Laura might know if there, if the applicant is also participating remotely.
Hey, Laura.
Hi, everybody. I can hear you now. Charles is also on the line with University Flowers. If you could please allow him to speak as well.
That Charles Grass.
Charles, I'm going to butcher his last name, it's S C R A S E.
I got it, yep. Hi, Charles.
Hey, everyone. Sorry, I can't be there in person. My partner's out of the country and I've got kid duty at home tonight.
Send her some flowers.
So just, just to give some background, this is a conditional use approval to allow retail services at the property that is owned industrial and is also in the Jackson Road overlay district located at two one two South Wagner Road. University Flowers would occupy Suite A, which is approximately twenty-two hundred square feet of space. This is for University Flowers' production facility where they will produce arrangements mainly for their event, events and weddings, things like that. But they would like this very small one hundred and thirty square foot, square foot total area of of the total space as a retail portion to allow pickup of pre-made flower arrangements. They plan to have about five to ten retail transactions out of this location per day and the regular business hours are ten AM to six PM with about three to six employees. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this conditional use on April eighth after a public hearing where no public comments were heard. And I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the public, the Planning Commission meeting or if you have questions for Charles, I'm sure he would be happy to answer any.
Charles, did you want to add anything?
Sure, I would say that as a longtime Sciop Township resident and native of Ann Arbor, I'm proud to be an owner of, part owner of this business that's been around since nineteen thirty-one. We are located in Nichols Arcade and do a great business, walk up traffic and have done so for many, many years. We've also been really successful in growing our events business and needed additional space to produce floral arrangements for events, which we found in Sciop Township, which I was really happy about. We've been hearing from our customers for quite a while that it can be difficult to come to us by foot and that there's not really a good way to purchase flowers from us in person, by car. We think that the location that we're in with the parking spots that we have, with the accessibility that we have and with the capacity that we have to provide the service would add a benefit to the community and would, would allow more people to more easily buy floral arrangements from us. So we're hopeful that you'll approve this, this application for conditional use.
Are there any questions from members of the board?
I just want to say, Charles, I think it's a fantastic idea. I was really excited when I saw this coming through. You've got a great business and glad to see a small location in Sciop, so thank you.
So the model motion is to adopt the attached conditional use permit for University Flowers, CU number two four zero zero one based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission at its April eighth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
I would say moved.
Moved by risers, supported by Brazil. Please call the roll.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Brazil? Carrie? Yes. Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. All right, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come see us.
And Laura, do you want to stay on? The next item is the Development Review Rates.
Yeah, I'll stay here in case there's questions.
Okay, so this was, this is an item that was prepared by our township manager, Parker. Would you like to introduce this?
Well, we've had discussions with Carlisle Wortman related to our fees and whether they're comparable with other communities. And it was suggested that we consider making adjustments to the fees to cover our expenses primarily because we're not covering our expenses at this point in time. Laura's been quite a bit of the work and due diligence on the item and I was asked her to perhaps comment related to that process.
So a lot of this was brought up as we talk about a potential contract renewal for Carlisle Wortman, but really, you know, what came to light as we're looking at these fees, these are pass-through fees for the developer to pay for services provided as part of the review process. The current fees were last amended in August two thousand and fifteen and I'm not really sure at what point, you know, at what, what that meant as far as the amendment at that time. For example, the, for the conditional use, like what Charles just received, our fee, the total fee is about fourteen hundred dollars. Carlisle Wortman, or Carlisle Wortman gets about three hundred of that. That doesn't, that hardly covers our actual review of the, of the, of the project. In addition to that, we, we also prepare the public hearing notice, we attend the Planning Commission meeting. I'm here tonight with you to give an overview of the project. And so, while that's a small project, some of the larger projects as well, like like Trailwoods that we had at the Planning Commission last night and, and others, the fees have not been updated in, in ten years or more. And so the fees that we've provided you are, are, like I said, they're pass-through fees. These are in line with other, what other communities charge. As part of this process, we also have, I know Jessica's gone to Pittsfield Township. A lot of our communities work through an escrow-based system where the pass-through fees are, are, they're, they're fronted as an escrow and then our, our costs are drawn down and so anything left at the end of that, it gets given back to the developer. That ensures that the township costs are covered and not as much fees or, or, fees aren't being supplemented by the general fund. So this is a first step. I think there is more, there's more research to do, but I think by approving these these increased rates at this time, that will help cover some of these initial costs as you look for maybe other, other ways to collect developer fees through your township processes.
So Laura, can I just clarify something with Laura? The, the fees that we're talking about, the exhibit A to the resolution, those are just the fees specifically for the Carlisle Wortman work. So it's not that, you mentioned before, currently the conditional use total fee is about fourteen fifty. We're not changing that fee, we're just changing. We're not changing that fee, we're just changing the column on, on your, on the other document in front of you that says CWA fee, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
So we, we might need to revise exhibit A to make that more clear.
That's what I was gonna think about, Mariah, yeah. And it, and maybe even just for a lot of clarity, the second whereas, the schedule of fees for development review by planner?
Yeah.
By art planner?
Yeah.
Has not been updated since two thousand and fifteen, and then exhibit A, Mariah, what would you suggest as a, a more clear title for that? Um. Go ahead, Laura.
I was just gonna say planner fee, you could change CWH fee to planner fee, and OHM could be engineer fee, if you wanted to, you know, make it more general.
Yeah, because we were calling it development review, but that doesn't really, that's too broad, so.
No, it's the schedule of fees. Mariah, what would you suggest, schedule of fees for development review by planner?
Yeah, or, and maybe it just could be planner review fees.
Planner review fee.
So under exhibit A, or where are you looking at the language?
The second whereas is and exhibit A, revision, exhibit A, could we call it planner review fees?
So the schedule of fees for planner?
Planner review. So that we'd just be amending that column. Yeah.
Does anyone know what the delta is from the fees for two thousand and twenty fifteen, you said till now, I mean, is it a forty percent increase, a twenty percent?
I was gonna ask that very question, and I thought, Will, that you were gonna start here and go around. She had a question, I have a question.
Okay, let's go around then, why don't we start with trustee Carrie?
Okay, so the planner fees were reviewed. Joyce, are we going to review the Sciotownship fees and also?
Yes, we are.
Engineer, okay.
Yeah, and we'll be bringing back any changes that need to be made with what we currently charge versus what we should be charging.
Just gonna take a little more analysis.
Some time to get more of that concept.
So then my question was, what's the difference between these new proposed fees and what we were, had been charging?
So it's, if you, so the, the.
So do you have that handout there?
Yeah.
Kathy, and you have to look at the, the two together, but everybody can.
Yeah, so you take exhibit A, so like number five, conditional use application. And the very first line is conditional use, so planner B right now, or is three hundred dollars, and now it's eight hundred, is that what we're reading?
Proposed as a.
Proposed.
And what about CPA variances, what would they?
I mean, I'm wondering if it could all be. Like side by side, is that what you want?
Yeah.
Well, you see, oh.
Residential variance right now is two fifty.
So it would be six hundred.
So that's residential variance is the same as CPA variance?
I believe so. So that would be a.
I mean, shouldn't we kind of consolidate a bit, just so it's comprehensive, so we can understand it?
So it says it was amended February ninth of two thousand and twenty-one.
So the, the amendment from February ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, that's when we first adopted the fee schedule for the fire inspections. And so primarily, we cleaned up a couple of things on like the marijuana fees, a couple of the other stragglers. But we, but this is the first time since two thousand and fifteen that the planner review fees have been updated.
Okay. And, and we could, we could do a revision and get this back at the end of the month that made the most sense, because I, this is, this is a bit confusing.
Yeah, and we've had different, I think that it's a, it's a matter, Mariah, of making sure that it's something that works for staff that's implementing it. Has been kind of the balance between getting something that makes sense to us who don't use it every day.
Well, isn't it a matter of sort of going through what, whatever the, the chart is that the staff use and updating the fees within the chart?
Mm-hmm. That's all it is, and I, I mean, I, I don't feel like I need to hold up action from tonight, but I do think we should answer Kathy's questions about where the differences are on each one.
That might require holding up action today.
Okay.
Just for two weeks, I mean, does that seem reasonable to you, Mariah? I think it's reasonable, Joyce would.
Just to get some. Get back in two weeks.
Yeah, just, just to get some more clarification.
Okay, so just to be clear about the clarification that you're seeking, you would like to.
The current fees and the proposed new fees.
Side by side.
Yes, yes.
Or maybe just their fee schedule just marked up, you know?
Well, it's.
That's fine.
Right, and I think what Kathy is asking us to do is to have them side by side where you can see what the differences are.
Yes, and when would this be implemented and how much to notice would developers get?
Well, I would really defer to Mariah, just in terms of the ordinance, whether it's something that can go into the immediate effect or if there's a timeframe, so.
So it's not an ordinance, it's a resolution, because we have an ordinance that says from time to time, we'll update our fee.
Right, and we're proposing effective immediately.
Effective immediately.
Or.
And these, these, the, the proposed fees, you know, as you know, I work in a bunch of different communities, these proposed fees are well in line with whatever, when I was, this, there's not a single developer out there who's gonna be surprised by, by this increase.
Yeah, and I would argue that we'll probably have more. After this.
Well, could we even go, I guess I'm just thinking, does it have to be just straight past you, why wouldn't it be past you plus ten percent or something? You know, it's developers, they're adding benefit, there's a cost, there's.
It's about the difference between a tax and a fee.
Bold?
It's a.
Yeah, it's a bold, right.
It's a tax and a fee, yeah.
There's a legal reason.
So you wanna pay. You need to have, a fee needs to cover the cost of the service. We need to do our homework to develop what that full cost is.
Yeah, she said we load the cost, so we make sure we get all hard, like, soft cost, hard cost.
Well, we need to update that analysis.
And then we also accommodate for us holding the money, well, like you said, if we escrow, then, then, then we're not kind of.
We don't escrow yet.
No, the escrow's a fantastic idea, I love that.
Escrow?
And you know what?
So we, so Mark, they, they, it's like a very first, not many of these other.
Okay, all right, we're jumping ahead.
Yeah, but lots to do.
We do escrow for some things, but we don't, we don't for everything.
So it's, it seems, it seems to me that there's sort of a general feeling that we postpone this, bring it back so that we can look at our current fees compared to the proposed fee increases in.
Just so we understand it, so staff understands it.
Right, right.
I mean, I'm supportive of this test.
Okay, so, I don't know, we need a motion to postpone?
I, I think we should to a time certain, to next meeting?
Postpone to the next meeting?
Yeah, sure.
That's right.
Okay, so.
Postpone to next regular meeting?
Who's making that motion?
I'm. Yeah, I'll move to.
Trustee Brazil makes the motion, trustee Noel supports, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I believe that would be the next regular meeting.
What, and what, would the date be?
May twenty eighth, July second.
Yeah, not, not the special meeting, but the next regular meeting.
Oh, yeah. Right.
Okay, all right, so.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Laura. Okay, that brings us to the additional item, this was the discussion of the rate increases, Flintoff?
Oh, sure, I just wanted a, a minute here to touch base on the topic of the special meeting that the supervisor called for next Wednesday, May twenty-second at six PM. It's, it's something that we've talked about internally a lot, but we haven't had a chance to talk about as a whole board. So I just want to make sure everybody's really clear about kind of the information we're gonna hear and the process we're gonna be starting out. So it's on the water and sewer rate study. And this is something that we've all known we need to have done for a long time. We're fortunate enough where PM Gap has finally been here to give enough capacity, they've conducted an interim rate study. They've worked really hard with the finance team, utilities team to assess the financial position of our water and sewer system, which of course is an enterprise fund supported almost exclusively by water and sewer customer fees. So such a rate study here in Sciop hasn't done in many, many years. And the township has not raised rates at regular intervals, say annually, or other regular interval. Instead, it's been somewhat sporadic and on occasion. We've known internally, we need to look at this and that there would likely be a needed rate increase after we look at it. So the study's complete, it's an important step forward. We've internally met with the supervisor, treasurer, manager, all the staff and myself to review kind of the assumptions, the data points and forecasting out at least five to six years. We discussed the need to inform the board and residents, and the need also to get the information and decide what action we want to take based on it. So next Wednesday, May twenty-second at six PM is for the sole purpose of just hearing the presentation. Brian Camiller from Plant Moran is gonna have it in writing, hopefully to us by Friday, he promised it. And then we'll, we'll get it out to everybody and post it by Monday. And the purpose is to hear from Brian and to get questions and comments from water and sewer customers. We've let all the water and sewer customers know out of full transparency, to notify them that we're doing this rate study and that we are going to have it publicly available. And that I would expect after that, there's gonna be a lot more discussion that this board has to have, will have a lot of questions and start that deliberation on June eleventh at our regular meeting. It's a complex issue, you know, we approved a big capital plan, and now part of it's, how do we fund it? We've not raised rates for many years, how do we catch up? So there's a lot of these conversations we're gonna need to have, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody was, was clear on that.
Jessica, I think we have raised rates in the last several years.
We have, and I look back, that's gonna be part of the.
You just said many years, and I don't think that's correct.
Excuse me, so we've not done a rate study in many, many years, we've done sporadic, uneven, inadequate rate increases. So we did one in, you know, a couple, I think three years ago, two or three years ago, and definitely with the passing on the Ann Arbor increases.
Yes.
We've done some of it.
Yes.
But in terms of anything else that kind of looks at our costs and the cost recovery for it, that's what the rate study is gonna kind of dig into.
Hey Jess, what's an average, I mean, I'm on, I'm on sewer, so I have no idea, what's the average water and sewer bill for the average Siop resident cost?
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, but that's exactly one of the data points that's gonna be presented on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Out at twenty-second.
Yeah, because you know, when you hear talk about rate increases, am I raising it five dollars or raising it five hundred dollars, you know, what is that? Obviously, they're gonna garner a lot more.
And it's this, it's this board that's gonna have to really understand the information, because we are the ones who are gonna be deciding if, how much and when to raise rates.
Trustee Carrie?
Yeah, so I use between two and three units. One unit is a thousand gallons, so two to three units per quarter. When I had my teenage daughters, it was a lot higher, but um, my bill is a hundred and thirty-nine.
Per?
Quarter.
Quarter, okay.
But I'm pretty conservative with my water, I don't.
Your water and your sewer?
Water and sewer, I have rain barrels for everything outside. And yeah, so other people, they take a lot of showers, of course, they're, they're gonna have a, and water their lawn, they're gonna have a much higher bill. So it's, you have your RTS water, RTS water fee, RTS sewer fee, then we have a debt fee that we're paying, and then we have water usage and then sewer usage, which is the same as your, yeah, so it. When my daughters were living with me back in two thousand and thirteen, we used seven units per quarter, and my bill was less money back then than it is now.
And let me just say one more thing, going back to the fees, we did raise fees quite substantively in two thousand and twenty-one. And those are fees for certain one-offs, okay, so fire hydrant rentals, other connection fees though, so we did address that. Woodhill did a great analysis, we went in, we took care of that, but there was that second, more complex rate study that we hadn't yet done, and that's gonna look at the rates. Okay, so lot, lot for all of us to learn and dig into.
Good, my team.
And in this structure, there's two components, there's the ready-to-serv, which is the cost to get the water ready to go in the operations. And then the user, so there's two pieces.
Are there further questions or comments?
I just sort of bit, remind you, you had asked if I was available that night for a meeting, and I had said no. I can get there, but I'll be late.
Well, that's great if you can make it, we were trying to find a time that would work for the most people, and sometimes we just have to go forward.
Six PM is early for a lot of people.
Early?
People are used to a seven PM.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Public meeting, board meeting.
I think, I think the, the, we were trying to set it at a time that would work for Plant Moran Gap, because they're making a presentation, but also we were, I think, trying to accommodate people, staff who might be intending, because we, I think we probably wouldn't have staff, but also members of the public as well, many of whom are not regular attendees at meetings, because we sent out a notice that you have in your hand.
Well, we haven't received at my home, but. It just went out.
It just went out today.
How many went out, how many were mailed?
Well, what do you have, like about?
To all the customers, I have to ask Lori or Mary.
Like a two, two thousand plus customers.
Yeah. You need to be there. You have, you have a cold water, you better be there.
Are there further questions or comments? All right, let's move on, the next item is K five, this was added, this is the motion that was made, well, the amendment that was made to the DDA budget by the DDA board. And we actually have with us, a member of the DDA board made the motion, but this was the amendment to increase the amount in the roads construction line item of the DDA budget from five hundred thousand to a million to accommodate the agreement, which you have as well, you have the copy of the agreement. Just to put this in context, in case not everyone's familiar with this particular project, but the, the road commission is planning on doing some major work on a section of Jackson to the east of the Z Road intersection. They approached the DDA and asked if the DDA would provide funding so that they could also do the other side of the intersection and improve that at the same time. So that they're bidding for a larger project as a result of the DDA's participation.
Want to start?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, so I, I raised some concerns with the DDA shortly after their special meeting, so just some, some context. The DDA, of course, approves their budget and the board approves their budget. So their budget was approved as part of our March nineteenth appropriation. And in that budget and the detail provided to us, there was a five hundred thousand dollars for construction on roads, described to us as the two kind of side streets, I forget which ones, Medi and.
Medi and Deena.
No, thank you, Medi and Deena. It was not, but a couple of weeks later, the DDA had a special meeting, I was called in here to help with Zoom. Was unable to help with Zoom, but I was called in here and overheard the road commission asking the DDA for five hundred thousand dollars, five hundred thousand more dollars for this new project. So I, I raised this because it's a pretty significant additional expenditure just a couple of weeks into the fiscal year, five hundred thousand dollars out of a total budget of one point seven million. So about thirty percent additional a few weeks into the fiscal year. So I, I do wanna, you know, I, I am concerned and curious, I'd like to know more from the DDA about why the DDA wanted to suddenly do this project when we were adopting the budget just a few weeks before. How did this come about so suddenly, and why is it important? And then I just have some questions about how this contract was modified. So kind of why, what, what was compelling about the DD, what was compelling to the DDA about a request from the road commission for a project they were already planning?
Well, the, the, are you, the sequence of events, is that what you're sort of?
No, I'm just, I'm curious, like, we adopted the DDA budget with a plan for five hundred thousand dollars of roads projects. And a few weeks later, the DDA decided to spend five hundred thousand dollars more.
Like Ryan was trying to.
Oh, Ryan?
Oh, I I could speak to.
Well, what, Brian, what you, you're you're a member of the D D A board and actually you made the motion to amend.
So I I can answer your first question, Clark Flintoff, then I can answer the second one. So the reason the special meeting actually occurred was the road commission. This part I wasn't personally a large fan of, I I think there was also some other members that weren't thrilled with the timing. The road commission during our discussion of what we previously talked to them about, which was Medi and Dino Drive and the fact that they are going to be the. Contractor to do to ultimately bid out the work and insurance completed. Came to us with, I think the phrase is an opportunity. To participate in this particular project, but it was time sensitive for two reasons, one reason was. The project was going to be put out to bid by the end of April. So they needed to know whether the bid scope and documents were going to include the additional work or not. They also needed in order for the timing of the work, because of the the bid going out quickly. But also the work will begin, I want to say approximately the middle of June, has to be finished no later than the end of September or very early October. Julie could talk to you more about how the road commission is doing the first part of the project, because it's going to take them. It's not a week, it's going to take them a substantial part of time. One of the statements the road commission made to us and. I do believe it to most of the point. Is there is some cost savings on their end, I think was a bit hard to quantify to us. And since the contract will already be mobilized to the site doing the additional work. If it were to be paid for from the D D A and or someone else, but the D D A ultimately was whom they were asking. It would be cheaper to do it now as part of the existing project than potentially doing later. I can, from a logical standpoint, see that, I don't necessarily. Like I said, I was not a huge fan of the timing, there were several other members of the D D A that were not. In a positive manner about the fact that this seemed very rushed and it did seem very sudden.
Yeah.
But ultimately it did pass, I want to say unanimously. From the D D A board to do it. I think there is the the question, and this is probably more of a question for. Once I am, whomever else is ultimately elected to this board of. One, trying to work with the road commission and come up with. Can we get more of Jackson Road into the county village at some point? And two, how the D D A and the road commissioner are going to work together more long term and where does that go into the D D A's plan, because. Right now, then none of this was part of the D shape plan. To to be fair, it was a plan the D D A came up with, but it's not in the adopted D D A plan as of the state.
Repaving Jackson Road.
Correct, that is not in the D D A plan, that's my understanding.
And the, I mean, because I I think we all know the road commission can be formidable, and they have come to this board before. Asking for money suddenly, so I just want to acknowledge, I'm familiar with the dynamic. I just, I was concerned when I saw the D D A say yes.
I think there was. I think there was a desire to do it because of the fact, I think several things came into it ultimately. One was the fact we're already doing road road projects this year, I think that helped. In some some minds, I think also the fact that the D A ultimately created the boulevards, so there is some sense of. Responsibility, even if legally we're not responsible, but maybe, you know. Wanting to do the best thing for it, even if we're not really the ones that should be doing it. I'll admit that. But ultimately, it was was approved by the D D A board.
And I know you're just one member.
And I'm just one member, I can speak to what I could see from other people's. Body language and. Some of the looks on some of the members' faces. But ultimately, it was something the D D A board decided to do. I know we are working to get the D D A plan revised and published, and I think long term planning for the D D A. Will be crucial to prevent things like this from happening again.
Yeah, and I, yeah, go ahead.
It sounds to hear that the road commission came to the D D A.
They specifically came to our March meeting to talk about the Medi and Dino Drive project and. I would say they were they were encouraged with our partnership and then wanted to proceed further with. Additional partnership opportunities very quickly.
That is why we called the special meeting in April, the D D A board.
Because the.
It weren't scheduled to be.
Correct until May, they gave us thirty days to make a decision.
That's kind of rushed.
I would agree.
So I would ask our, at least our two D D A members, at least on my behalf, on the board's behalf to. To one, please don't do this again. Like, take the time, especially when it's the road commission. I'll say the D D A holds our debt, like, you know, we we have debt and the D D A also has a lot of cash. And five hundred thousand dollar authorizations, we could just go through it real quick. And I haven't seen, and I'd like to ask P M Gap, maybe to do this for the D D A. Kind of a a projection of paying down the debt. We have a lot of cash and a lot of debt, we have as much cash as we have debt, which is not normally the position an organization's in. And and not to make any big decisions, but I want to better under understand it. But but would just, and I'm glad that the D D A is bringing a budget amendment and a contract to the board. I just think that's always been our practice, is any contract with the road commission that the D D A passes, the board also passes. So this was just, it was abnormal for not for the D D A to make its own authorizations, which it's certainly entitled to do. It was abnormal because it was a special meeting, it was a huge amount of money. And at the very beginning of the fiscal year.
The question you also asked, I believe, was about specifically how the contract was written. I believe the redlining on the contract was at the request of Sandy. If I recall from the meeting correctly, there was.
I know.
No, and you correct me if I'm wrong, well.
Well, Sandy had raised a question, and and this is because there was a. Invoice that came in the past from the D D A made to the township. Or came came from the road commission to the D D A, and it was made to the township instead of to the D D A, and so. That was what she was trying to avoid, I believe, by raising that question, so. The contracts that is shared out, you don't have a copy of it.
No, I saw it yesterday, I saw it yesterday.
I shared it with Mariah.
Yeah, so it it Mariah got it today. Everyone has a copy of it, that is from the road commission in in I think in response to that. Question, that question.
Okay.
And I I'd say in the past, just for at least as long as I've been here, and I don't know if you remember Kathy and Donna, but. I mean, always, any road commission agreement, they all look really standard, just like the one we passed earlier tonight. And Jim Fink has always advised that, you know, we 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 approve road commission contracts. Even for D D A projects, we did one earlier this year, last year, so even if it's a hundred percent D D A funding, the D D A approves it. And the township approves it, I don't know if that's because we're fully liable for the D D A debt, I don't know if it's because it's a component unit. I don't know if it's because the road commission wants it, I can think of about five good reasons why we would do that. So it was also curious to me that. At this past Monday's D D A meeting, they were also kind of changing the language of the contract that they adopted. And so that's why I gave it to Mariah with the side by side of what our typical road commission contract is. Just to make sure that the township's interests are protected.
Well, that the contract that was in the packet, I don't know what the explanation was for that at the the last, the. D D A meeting yesterday, but the contract that I hinted out is the one that was approved by the D D A. At its April meeting, it came from in that form from the road commission.
And I'm also, I'm asking my attorney a question, but I'm not asking her to answer right now, she needs more time.
No.
And I want to recognize that, but I just want want her to approve it before we.
Frankly, I can't tell you, since I haven't seen what you're looking at specifically right this second, I can't tell you if the same thing I saw yesterday. It could be different, it could be the same, it could be the thing from April, there's several versions of this document out there, so it's hard to know.
It's the it's the same substance, it's just.
Yeah, it's just.
For some reason, the version that was in the packet referred to the township instead of the.
Oh, yes, yes.
And the other thing I would say, which we sort of realized. The other thing I would say, which we realized yesterday.
Sorry, so the the action that we're being asked to do tonight is to basically. Approve the amendment to the D D A budget that the D D A made at its meeting yesterday. And the language of that, I think you were incorporating into a a new motion for the board. But basically, it's the the motion that Ryan made yesterday was an amendment to the D D A budget. He he made the motion, I should say, with the D D A approved the motion, but the amendment is to the D D A twenty twenty four budget general ledger account. Four nine four dot zero 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 dot nine seven two dot zero zero one. Construction roads to a total of one million dollars, and so that was the amendment to the D D A budget. And we're bringing it back so that, like the D D A's budget overall, the a budget amendment can also be approved by this board.
And I do have some model motion language here for that, I mean, it it it's basically what Will said, it's just. It would be to, I'm not offering it, but it would be to amend the resolution twenty twenty four oh eight. The approved township budget for F Y E twenty five to appropriate an additional five hundred thousand dollars. From fund four ninety four D D A fund balance to four nine four zero 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 nine seven two zero zero one. Construction roads for the purpose of repaving Jackson Boulevard.
So if someone's prepared to make that motion, then we can move forward.
Or the other thing I was just going to tell you that we had a discussion shortly about yesterday during the meeting was. The D D A brings in right now roughly two point one million dollars, township general fund is just in revenues just under one point four. There is the question that Jessica asked of, should the D D A likely, P M Gabby's do some analysis about. Paying down debt versus where can this else be used and sort of planning longer, but that'll be for a different night.
Yeah, I I agree, for a different night, but it.
Just a piece for those that don't know about it or weren't at the meeting.
Yeah, and the the plan, so this five hundred thousand dollars, this is only a. A portion of Jackson Road, we have a lot of Jackson Road, so are they gonna, you know, is it gonna be in the plan, five hundred thousand here and there? So I agree.
Sixteen hundred feet, some portions of Jackson Road are in worse shape than other portions.
So this, so appropriating this budget, I mean, basically, if if the the authorization has been done. Okay, and so I think it's necessary that we amend this budget. But I will just say, you know, and I'm I'm happy to bring further actions at our next board meeting to put some more controls on the D D A if we need to. But what I'm just asking Will and Ryan is to please, don't do this again.
I agree.
So I'd make a motion to amend resolution twenty twenty four oh eight. The approved F Y E twenty five budget to appropriate an additional five hundred thousand dollars. From fund four ninety four D D A fund balance to four nine four zero 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 nine seven two zero zero one. Construction roads for the purpose of repaving Jackson Boulevard.
So motion by Flintoff, also support by Brazil, please call the roll.
Palmer?
I have a question before I vote, that language to me is an open door. Jackson Road Boulevard, I would like it defined as to what we're approving this for.
That's a great point.
How many feet?
Yeah, that's a great point, Donna, so.
Yeah, the first line.
Industrial Drive.
Right under the agreement summary.
Industrial Drive and Myrtle Avenue.
Okay.
Friendly amendment, that's a good point, industrial drive to Myrtle.
Well, to clear.
Three miles west.
From Z to Jacks to Jackson Industrial, that's where it references from Z.
Do we have agreement, is there agreement amongst the D D A members about what the scope was of the contract?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mariah, have you reviewed this?
Well, no.
In real time.
So so that, yeah.
I just got a copy.
So that that is confusing to me because this contract says Jackson Road, Jackson Industrial Drive to Myrtle Avenue, but you're saying that's not the scope.
That's the entire project scope, the D D A's cost sharing or portion of it.
Oh, we did say that, but only the portion of five hundred thousand dollars, that's some.
It's it's what Ryan just said, it's from Z Road.
The Jackson Industrial.
West to Jackson Industrial.
So if it's Jackson Industrial to Myrtle, Z is in the middle of that.
Do we need more time?
Saying it's from Z Road on Jackson West to Jackson Industrial.
Do we need more time, Mariah, on this?
No, I I'm I'm there, I need to, I would like to make some proposed amendments to this since I'm the executive road commission. It is confusing, it looks like they took an a couple of different agreements and sort of mashed them together, but. Then they took some things out and it 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 doesn't read very well.
Yeah, so Mariah, on on to, because we have two questions before us tonight, and I told them wait on the contract until we get. Your recommended version, do you think we should wait on what is the impact on the budget appropriation?
No, I mean, this is, it's just clarifying what we're doing, it's not going to change the amount at all.
Okay, okay, so so what is the modification based on Donna's suggestion?
I would, I would say the modification is to pave the Z Road, to pave Jackson from Z. To Jackson Industrial to repay.
Z Road to Jackson Industrial, Ryan, do you agree?
I'd agree with that. Okay, subject to review and approval by the township attorney.
No, because this would be a budget amendment, what I'd suggest is if we want more, because I'm feeling a kind of eh about it too. I would say that we just wait on amending the budget until we get the contract back, but I'm also, I'm comfortable amending. The budget because the D D A has already said that they want to do this.
Right.
But whether or not we agree to it, I just, I guess in the scenario where our attorney comes back and says, this agreement makes no sense.
No, that's not gonna, I mean, it's really just, it's really just. Clarify, so so I, if you're asking me. I would be comfortable with kind of a hybrid of what John said, if you want to go ahead and approve the budget. Amendment and this agreement after revision by the township attorney authorized the clerk and the supervisor to approve this.
I'd be more comfortable just doing the budget amendment and then waiting to get the contract back when it's clean.
And bring it to the entire board.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so why don't we proceed with the roll call vote on the budget amendment?
Yep. Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes, Brazil? Barry?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Motion adopted seven zero, and can we table until May twenty eighth? A motion to table until May twenty eighth, the proposed contract with the road.
I think postpone is is.
Sure, thank you.
I would support that motion.
Okay, so motion by Flintoff, support by Riser to postpone the board approval of the.
Proposed contract.
Related contract until the next regular meeting of May twenty eighth.
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion passes. So that brings us to the item that was pulled from the consent agenda, this is H eight. And.
Oh, D D A. Well, this is. A B K, yes, so actually, no, this is not. This is in the D D A, but the D D A is not paying for this.
They currently, right, yeah.
Currently, so this is, yeah, this is where, so. Currently, so this is, yeah, this is where, so this, I attended the DDA meeting yesterday and they had approved. So the landscape, oh, is that right, landscape watering contract, no, 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 um. Uh, the second phase of the Boulevard landscape, so Gus. Okay, sorry Gus, if you're, um, so he went out for bid for the second phase. And they originally had K B K do some of the islands. Well, he went out and found um, this other company and it was forty thousand dollars less. Yeah, so more than, more than forty, okay, but I know it was at least forty thousand, so. Gus saved on the township, the DDA, a lot of money. So then, then K B K shows up and here we are. And this is about the medians and the, it's under the utility director, which doesn't make sense to me. If we're having the utilities and the DDA work on the Boulevard, then um, there's. There's a lack of communication. They should be working together. Well, but it brings back to K B K. They're expensive and we have a, an agreement with them for another year. Contract, I believe, and so yes, till May tenth of twenty twenty five. I did talk with Bran- Brandon earlier today about this and um. We really need to go out for bid. I don't, I don't know who wanted K B K in the first place, if it ever did go out for bid. Or it's just been on and on and on, we.
It, it did go out to bid at some point.
It did, when Steve Wickaus. You tell these director, it went out for.
Yeah, doesn't mean it doesn't need to go out again.
Okay, they're just very expensive and if we wanna be congruent in this township and really be for the environment. We should not be spraying. Chemicals along the Boulevard because even though it's in the Boulevard, it's still affecting. The pollinators, the bee, you know, the birds, um, our water system.
So is there a proposal?
And they're spreading a lot of chemicals.
Well, I, I wanna, my, my comment on this is that it's what it was when we adopted the budget. We were rushed to adopt the budget and I said, I'll have some budget amendments for the July one quarterly budget amendments. My budget amendment is going to be for the DDA to start paying for this median. I have suggested that, I have asked that. The DDA drops five hundred thousand dollars on a road project that the road commission was gonna do anyway. The DDA is installing nice signs, nice new landscaping. The DDA should maintain it as well. I just think that, you know, if, if, that, that that's just a policy thing. I can't, in terms of the going out to bid, I'd suggest you raise that with joy.
Yeah, it'll be next year, don't you know? Um, but you know, it, it is, it's again, it goes back to the DDA and one of my questions um. Yesterday was what does, what does the DDA do and then also the township do? Regarding the DDA and vice versa, because we, we're having, it seems like we're doubling the work. Or the utility department and the DDA and there's not a lot of communication.
Yes, well, Brandon just administers the contract. I mean, it's not the utilities folks doing the work.
The whole separate issue, I mean, right now we got K B K maintenance issue.
Right, but.
And I agree that you go to bid, I honestly agree.
It's here, that's why I'm bringing it up. It's not so much about the contract, we have to pay the contract. That's not the point, but it's, it's talking about the DDA again and um, the township here.
Yeah.
And if we're paying for this and the DDA is doing whatever, then.
Agreed.
There's gotta be, there's gotta be communication.
So move this to whether we paid the bill or not, correct? Yes, the answer is.
Motion.
Yes, we have to bill.
So, so the reason for pulling this is to raise the issue, the larger issue, but, but not to not pay the bill.
We're to pay the bill, not, not pay the bill.
A double negative made it confusing, but what I'm saying is you're not, your, your in- intent was not to prevent us from paying.
Right, we have to pay the bill.
Yeah.
K B K maintenance bill.
And this is only for one month?
Yeah, and, and Joyce, while you're out, the, the bottom line is that just the exorbitant cost of K B K. One month, um, seven thousand seven hundred fifty and that's just April. I've seen these bills, it's, it's gonna be twelve grand at least each month during the summer. So just, again, that just may be the going rate, but it's kind of a.
Maybe not. No, yes, for forty thousand dollar.
So my, uh, trustee Brazil has made them model motion to approve invoice number five six zero five. Payment to K B K for maintenance of Jackson Road Boulevard in the amount not to exceed seven thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. From the township's public improvement fund and then was seconded by Ryan.
Yeah, there's a thirty day termination clause in here.
Yeah.
So we couldn't go out for bid even.
Yeah, no. Alright, let's pay the bill and then we'll get to that next. I'm putting that on the agenda.
Alright, so please call the roll.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintop, yes, Brazil.
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Motion adopted seven zero.
Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda. It's now time for public comment. This is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter of the purview of the board of trustees. Um, if there are members, um, I mean, if there are members of the public who are present and would like to speak to someone forward. And trustee Brazil will use her.
Who's speaking?
So a couple of things that I thought about after we were speaking about that. Number one, I boldly pledge that we're not doing any more thirty day road commission deals. Uh, and we're going, and we're going to uh, definitely. I, I would like to see the DDA come together on a long-term plan, ideally at least three to five years to match the capital improvement. Even if things in the capital improvement plan, we can't evolve that, the DDA simply can't. Uh, but another thing that I thought about, treasurer Palmer, after we were. Uh, during the meeting yesterday, was able to actually negotiate with Bank of Ann Arbor. They're now paying us four point eight nine percent on much of the DDA's money that's not in commercial paper or other investments. That combined with Gus's savings in the landscaping budget. Would allow between the interest earnings and, and the savings in the landscaping budget would allow, especially for this year. Subject to the DDA board approval. I'm just speaking about this personally, I can't say that. Have to make decision. There would be money available to pay for. The maintenance of the Boulevard without even making, potentially even making a budget amendment depending on when the. DDA takes it over, it could fall under landscaping, I would, I would believe, I would have to confirm that. That was just a thought I had as we were talking about that. Ultimately, we really need to likely meet with the road commission and figure out what their plan is. I, I drilled them quite a bit at that April meeting to ask them, what gets into your village? Specifically, how do we get Jackson Road to be more important to the village? I don't know, that's why I'm asking the road commission. I didn't get a great response to my questions. Uh, just thoughts that I had after talking with them. I think there's a lot more we can do with the DDA. The DDA does have a very large capture, as I said. There's about seven hundred thousand dollars more coming into the DDA than is coming into the general fund of township. So if the DDA has a plan and can execute on it, there's a lot that the DDA can do to ultimately benefit township.
It'd be great. I mean, that's why the DDA pays the cost allocation, like, you know, reach out for whatever funding to reports and analysis you need.
Thanks, guys.
Um, hello, Kathleen Brand again, um. Uh, segue to this exact conversation about spending in the DDA. Uh, Mr. Bu- Bootsakakis pointed out that uh, the initial contract to do. Um, landscaping renovations this past year. Uh, in the median of the D D, of the Jackson Road, Mr. Bootsakakis pointed out to. The DDA that K B K had not complete, had not fulfilled their obligations. Meaning that they did not plant all the plants that they were contracted to do. And it was substantial and as far as I am aware, no action was taken. And maybe Ryan can help us. Mister Bu- Bootsakakis offered to talk to K B K. And get this corrected and as far as I knew, there was no action taken at all. So you have an issue with a contractor who is not fulfilling their contractual obligations. They are forty to fifty percent higher than at least one other contractor. So there's an issue with that vendor. If Ryan has any information that the DDA actually took care of that problem. I would be interested in finding out.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak? Judy, did you wanna make another comment?
I'm good.
Well, you're, you're welcome. Let, let's turn to those participating remotely.
Sure, uh, first up was that Pam Boyd, followed by Rob Pattinson, Pam.
Thank you, Pam Boyd. Um, regarding the bee issue, um, I think in general, uh, trustee Riser, there's some merit there. Um, unfortunately, it brings up a few issues. Uh, one is where are the project priorities of this board? Where do the bees fall on that list of priorities? Where on your list is the priorities of pon- of pollinators project? Is that a high enough priority for you to spend time and energy on it at this point in time? Um, until you have as a board, um, the, a priorities list, this should be set aside. And trustee Riser, maybe you made a mistake, but you said, I don't know if we should have all of the details. Before we have a resolution. Seems like that's a bad idea. It leaves um, one to believe that this board wants to slap together things with spit. I'm for bees and SIO needs to prioritize their projects and to craft them in a way. You are not coming back to fix language because you didn't think through the details. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Next up is Rob Pattinson, followed by Jonathan Greenberg, Rob.
Thank you, Rob Pattinson. Uh, to clarify some issues with the DDA discussion, um, initially, uh, a couple of months ago, a few months ago. Uh, it was said that the westbound lane of Jackson Road from Zeeb. To Autozone would be what was going to be not repaved, but they're gonna cut out some sections of concrete and reconcret it. Um, that they're not gonna do the entire, they're not gonna rip out all the concrete and do the entire thing, it's gonna be in spots. So it isn't a complete repaving or reconcreting. Um, and it's only one side of Jackson Road, it is only the westbound side. So it's basically half of the four lanes of Jackson Road. Uh, from the, the million dollar part that the road commission put together. Is from the Everest Restaurant to Zeeb Road and then the half a million is from Zeeb to Autozone. Now they're talking about Jackson Industrial Plaza, that's one thousand four hundred-ish feet. And I will remind this board, I said this a couple of months ago, that um. Jackson Road or Jackson Boulevard is twenty-two thousand feet long. And since there's two sides of it, that's forty-four thousand feet. And at half a million dollars per thousand feet, that's twenty-two million dollars in repair costs for Jackson Boulevard. Now, if they go all the way for half a million bucks, if they go all the way to Jackson Industrial and it's one thousand four hundred, say it's eighteen million dollars. It's still millions of dollars and I agree with those who spoke earlier that. That is a bad precedent to set with the road commission that we're gonna spend on a major. It's not even a connector road, it's a major uh, highway. Um, that the road commission should be taking care of and the state should be taking care of. Uh, and then also yesterday at the DDA meeting, uh, Sandy Egler was able to share. That with the water and sewer meeting coming up on the twenty-second. They're talking about a ten point six percent increase if they decide to do the increases over five years. Ten point six percent for the first year. If they do it all at once, it's a thirty percent increase. I would submit that those are massive increases for the people in water and sewer. And you have a lot of thinking to do about how you wanna uh, handle that uh, come May twenty-second. I imagine there is gonna be a great deal of response from the SIO residents who are on water and sewer. Um, to, to raise their rates that much. Um, you got a lot to think about. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Next up is Jonathan Greenberg, Jonathan?
Hello and good evening. I wanna thank the board of trustees for your civil meeting today. I know there were some contentious conversations. Um, I am a little bit disappointed that when the conversation finally did get to. Helping me learn about the birds and the bees, you ended that conversation quickly. Please, I would like to learn more, but thank you all. Have a good night.
In the dark, Jonathan, keep you in the dark. Alright, next up is David Reed, David?
Yes, uh, David Reed, I just have a couple of comments on the bees and Jackson Boulevard. I've actually hosted uh, beehives on my property for the last ten or fifteen years. Couple in Ann Arbor who wanted to have hives, they didn't have the property, so they asked me if they could put them here and of course I said yes. They've had a difficult time with the hives, um, to, to get bees in Michigan. You typically have to buy them from either California, Texas or Florida and they're not ac- acclimated to Michigan. And they typically do not survive the winter, um, this year in February when the winter broke. Both hives were active and they, bees were flying around and then in March it got cold again and now both hives are dead. So typically bees do not, imported bees do not survive in Michigan. Um, and I know that part of the resolution was to move the hive by the end of December. And trustee Riser, uh, obviously he said that that's not a good idea, not until they uh, become active. But even if you move an active hive, uh, it could be that they won't like where they're moved to and I can attest to that. Because I participated in the relocation of an, of what um, the beekeeper thought was a native. Michigan beehive, actually from the wing of the wild, from the wild barn. It was in the walls of the wild barn. And we relocated that hive to uh, beekeepers here on Marshall Road and uh, to, to save them. And about three weeks later, I happened to be in my backyard and the hive swarmed. Through my, uh, over my backyard, over my head, through my backyard and they were gone. In fact, I called the, the folks, they live on Marshall Road, just a couple houses down from me. And they said, indeed, the uh, the bees had swarmed, so moving a hive doesn't necessarily work very well if the queen doesn't like where she is. Um, now all due respect to Chief Hood, um, unless the kids from the school actually. Stick their fingers in the hive or stick their head in the hive. Typically, honeybees are very docile and they won't necessarily sting you. Unless you do something stupid, which of course, we all know, children can do that. But um, unless the kids actually poke the hives, it probably is not an issue. So I would, I would propose that the township put hives on town, on the, close to the um. Proposed planting uh, on the fire, fire property, fire, uh, fire hall property. Where Mike Apple will be planting, I think it's in another couple of weeks, he's gonna be planting native plants underneath the solar panels. Um, now, those plants probably won't take, uh, won't be in full bloom for another couple of years. So, uh, but maybe in two or three years would be a place to put a hive for that native planting. Um, we actually have, uh, bees will typically go a mile from their hive. Up to five miles from their hive, looking for food and there are two hives on my property, four hives on my uh, neighbor's property. And four hives on the Marshall Road property, so there are ten hives within a mile of that school. So having another hive on, on the fire property probably isn't an issue. Also, a lot of concern about Jackson Road and it's seven thousand dollars, was it, did I read that right? Seven thousand dollars a month to maintain the Jackson Road, um, Boulevard, the, the, the green space along Jackson Road? Why isn't that planted with native, native plants? Native plants do not need to be. Why isn't that planted with native, native plants, native plants do not need to be mowed, they do not need to be um, watered after they're established. And it could be a perfect habitat for bees, so why are we planting grass on Jackson Boulevard?
Thanks, David. Any other interested public? I see none.
Motion to adjourn.
What?
No, one minute, all right.
Number one, I said from day one, glad that both are in ground covers. No maintenance, except maybe picking up trash, cause people are messing.
Yeah, no, there's gonna be, I don't know why we wouldn't do that.
And we've been using township funds.
And another thing, just a point for future boards that'll be here. The deed, the purpose of the DDA, when the bonds are paid. Technically is done, she's dead in mind. Dead in mind.
I'm with you, Donna.
Moved by Brazil, support by. Carrie, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. So nine fifty two.
Keep you energized.